We're still pretty close to Apple five here on our clock.
Yeah.
Oh, don't.
I've got three o'clock now.
Yeah.
Okay, it's halfway in between.
It's always better a little ahead than a little behind. All right, we're ready to go. Okay, let me call this meeting to order. My name is Rich Rita. I'm the Chair of the Waterville Valley Select Board. Here with me today is Wendy Raskover, the Vice Chair, and Dan Bancroft, Select Board Member. This is a regular meeting of the Waterville Valley Select Board for 4 June 2025. So we have a corn and we'll move on to the first item of business. So the National Forest, the White Mountain National Forest, is asked to make a presentation to the Select Board. This is not a public hearing. We are not anticipating, they are not planning of answering any questions from the audience. I believe there was a, there was a public presentation and comment session last night, and there's another one, a Zoom one tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. And I guess you guys will, we'll talk about that. So we asked them to please come and if they could spend a few minutes with us, fifteen minutes, and see what it is they would like to inform the board about. So Brooke, yeah, want to introduce yourself and have at it?
Yeah, it is perfect. All right. Well, good afternoon. I know I've been here before in the past. Let me introduce myself again. I'm Brooke Brown. I'm the District Ranger for the Pema Joasit Ranger District on the White Mountain National Forest. And we're here today to talk about the Waterville Valley Resort proposal that we have received as far as an expansion. So we'll talk a little bit more, Justin, actually, we'll talk about that. And so with me is Justin Preisenorford. He's the Eastern Region Winter Sports Team Leader. And the Waterville Valley Resort is located within the district of the Pema Joasit Ranger District, so on my district. However, our Forest Supervisor, Derek Abargwen, is the permit decision maker on all of the permits related to ski resorts. He's out of town this week, so he's unable to be here, and I'm largely representing him on this project. However, he is the authorized officer and the decision maker when it comes to all of the winter sports resource on the forest, like I was saying. So like I mentioned earlier, the Waterville Valley Resort has provided us a proposal to expand, so we're responding to their proposal and starting our NEPA process. So today we'll hear a little bit about the NEPA process, where we're at, what the proposal is, and how the public and the board can also be engaged throughout the process. So we are currently in our scoping period, which is the beginning. Again, we received the proposal, so now we're going out to the public and stakeholders to get an understanding of what what the thoughts and ideas might be related to that. This is a long process, so this is one of our first thirty, thirty day comment periods in about a year. When there's a draft EIS, after the analysis has been done, there will be another comment period. So this is not the only comment period for this project. Again, right now, we're just in the initial phase of beginning that analysis to be able to look at what's being proposed and the different resources that are out there and how they may or may not be affected.
Excuse me a second, Brooke. Can I just have someone turn off the lights and could you pull the shades? It's hard to see.
Yep.
Reflection on the screen.
The PowerPoint if that works.
So if you guys don't mind.
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Justin, who is going to be able to talk at much more length and expertise on this proposal.
That's all right. No, you're good.
All right. Do you want me to advance for you, Justin?
Sure, if you wouldn't mind doing that, that would be great. You'll give your license.
Thank you.
So as Brooke mentioned, my name's Justin Preisenorford. I work out of the camp and office, and I manage our program for winter sports permits, essentially ski area permits on national forest lands in the eastern part of the country. And so there are really three different parties that are part of the EIS process. That would be us, the Forest Service as a lead agency, the manager of the land, and the ones responsible for for the decision on whether to move forward on the proposal. We've got the resort, who is the project proponent. And then we have SE Group, who is a contractor. And so the contractor was hired by the resort, paid by the resort, and they prepare the analysis for the Forest Service. Their job is to work for us to prepare the analysis that our folks, our resource specialists, sign off on. So if it is a hydrology report that's created by the contractor, our Forest Service hydrologist signs off and accepts that as part of the analysis. The process, as Brooke mentioned, is a, is a long one. Advance one more. NEPA is, is the law that governs how we analyze this, this product, or this project, rather. We decided at the beginning that an environmental impact statement is going to be required for this to inform the decision, which is a higher level of analysis than we do on most projects. If it's just a simple singular trail construction project, it doesn't require the level of analysis that something of this scale does. NEPA also requires that we provide opportunities for the public to be involved, for stakeholders to engage. And really, the purpose of this is to inform the decision maker. Are there things that we overlooked that we haven't realized need to be assessed? Did we get our analysis of impacts wrong? In this first stage, we haven't done the analysis yet. So we're really just looking to know what are the potential concerns that we need to be focused on. And a year from now, when we issue the draft EIS, there, there will be the analysis that you can say, oh, no, you, you know, you should have done it this way, or you forgot about this one thing, and there, there will be a lot more work for you to review and provide feedback on. And then I guess the other part of scoping is to make sure that we, we get all of the right people on the mailing list. We get all of the right people engaged in the conversation. We started this before the kickoff. We identified who we believe were the interested and affected parties, those directly impacted. But even if you weren't in that initially identified group and you have a concern, you are welcome to participate. You're encouraged to participate. So the EIS is going to look at the current condition of each resource area to be analyzed. What is the current situation with wildlife habitat? What is the current situation with the hydrology? What's the current situation with aesthetics and scenery management? And then what are the anticipated effects or the impacts of these proposed actions if they were implemented? How would that affect wildlife habitat, scenery, hydrology, et cetera? It also will include any plans to reduce those impacts, like mitigation plans. So in an EIS, you can say, yes, there is going to be impact on this one resource area. We know that. There's no way to avoid that. But there's associated mitigation measures to help ease some of those impacts. And then lastly, kind of back to those, those individual resource areas, you know, what are the particular concerns for that resource area? Not, some concerns may be project wide, but others may be very specific to a resource, you know, that the timing of the cutting is going to have an impact on the northern longyear bats. That's, that's a wildlife issue. It's not a hydrology issue or a scenery issue. So timeline, we are in the scoping period thirty days where we are accepting comments on the, the initial proposal. We'll be working on the draft EIS, publishing that tentatively scheduled for May of 2026. And that's when that, that next comment period would come in. And then a year later, we're forecasting somewhere around May 2026 is when there would be a draft decision. There is a finalization and appeal period and these other things that kind of follow that. And so in reality, even though it will be, we are forecasting two years to the decision, it's really, it's about three years in total from now until when the resort could start turning dirt if their proposal was approved. So for the project area, I'm going to move up to the screen just so I can point in a couple of things and help you, help you identify where you are. We've got Corcoran Pond down at the bottom here. We would be somewhere over here. This is where forty-nine comes into town. Here's Triple I Road. And then it splits with one leg going up to the ski area and one leg continuing on Triple I. The project area where the impacts would occur is what you see on this screen. This is where the current downhill ski area is. Here's what is proposed for development with a lift system that goes to Town Square, some trails, some glating. This is an area that's proposed for future expansion, but no plans have been proposed right now for what that would look like. So that is the area where the actual work on the ground would occur. There's also a second, I have a copy of that map, but then I have a, another map that shows outside of this screen, what is our, kind of the greater Waterville area, and the colors represent our, our management area designations. What that means is it's like municipal zoning. And so the forest is zoned for different uses per our 2005 Forest Plan, which guides all of our actions. And in order to make this proposal happen, to allow it to happen, the Forest Plan needs to be amended. And there are two reasons for that. I'll cover them briefly in just a second. So next slide, Brooke. There are seven elements of the proposal, and I'm going to go through them one by one and just give you a brief description of each. The first is Village to Summit Lift System. So this is a lift, an aerial lift, much like a chairlift, but the lower portion would be a gondola. And the upper portion could be a gondola, or it could be what's called a chandala, which has a mix of gondolas and open cabin. But the lower part, which goes from Town Square to this bend just on the upper side of Triple I Road, I keep wanting to say north, but north is over this way. This part has to be closed cabin gondola because you can't go over the road with an open cabin where you could drop your pole on somebody's windshield, your ski could pop off. So it has to be a gondola. Those two segments could operate independently. They could operate with slightly different technology. But what is proposed is a lift system that goes from Town Square midpoint, where it changes angle, and then up to a terminus at Green Peak. The next component of the proposal is development of additional ski terrain. And this includes six traditional ski trails. That means the trees would be cut, the area that is cleared would be stumped and graded and then seeded. And those six trails are shown, it's kind of hard to see, but in like a grayish or light blue. One goes from the top of Green Peak and would wrap all the way down to the midstation. The other ones connect the existing downhill ski trails to the proposed midstation. There is also, actually, if you would go back just for a second, Brooke, the other piece for ski terrain in here is the, the brown. And the brown is proposed, it's about two hundred acres in total of brown, and that's proposed for glating. And so glating is where some of the trees would be removed to allow skiers to travel through the trees, basically tree skiing. Of those two hundred acres, it's not as if the entire two hundred acres would be glated from one edge to the other. There are some places where the terrain just wouldn't make sense. Some of those areas have already been excluded from that polygon, and they show as the lighter green islands, but within the brown, similar that it's not like glating would occur through the entire area. Snowmaking?
The green area, so they remain treed? Is that why they're green?
Correct. There is no cutting, no earth disturbance proposed in those areas. Snowmaking, so on the six traditional trails, snowmaking is proposed to be added. It would, it is anticipated to require no additional withdrawal from the water sources for which a resort is already permitted to obtain their water. Okay, total of something like a hundred and thirty-seven hydrants where snowmaking equipment would plug in. Those are shown by little dots in blue along the ski trails and ninety percent of the infrastructure for that snowmaking would be above ground. Ten percent would be below ground where like lines need to be buried where they cross a ski trail. Typically, they're buried six to twelve inches deep. Facilities is another component of this, and there are essentially two facilities that are proposed for construction. There is a midstation storage building, which is proposed to be two levels, twenty thousand feet. A big portion of that would be to store the gondola cabins and/or chairs at nighttime when they come off the line. There would be some guest services like ticketing there, probably some smaller food and beverage, other administrative needs. And at the top of the line, the top terminal for the lift where the chairs or gondola cabins would go around the bull wheel to go back down, there would be another facility. That would also be a two-story facility. I believe it's proposed to be thirty thousand square feet. That would include a restaurant for some more on-mountain food and beverage. Ski patrol would be located in there. There would likely be some other administrative space and room with a restaurant for event space as well. Utilities would make use of some of the existing connections that are already on the mountain. But there would be development of new utility connections there at both the top terminal and the midstation. Okay. Parking access. So for that midstation right now, there is no road off of Triple I Road, no access, so that would require a short kind of driveway of sorts to parking, proposed to be eighty spaces. So pretty limited there. Parking has been a question, was a question last night. And one of the things that, I don't think we did a great job highlighting last night, but one of the purposes of this proposal is to better use existing parking at the ski area. And so for those of you who are familiar, the absolute worst spot to park at the resort these days is at the bottom of Lot Nine, where you are the farthest away from the lifts. However, the way that this is laid out, if you parked in that same exact spot on Lot Nine and then just walked across the road and clipped into your skis, you could ski down to that midstation lift. So it makes better use of the existing nine lots that are, that are on the mountain.
Next question?
Yes.
At the midstation, would septic services be needed?
Yes. So the discussion has been to tie into the existing line. However, there's been a lot of discussion about the current situation.
Right.
And how that ties in and what's coming in the future.
Right.
So that is the proposal we submitted. There is a, yeah, it's a seven hundred foot long access road, and that does cross through a right-of-way that we provided to DOT. So we're working with them to make sure that everybody's happy with, with that situation. Next on the list is, these last two are ones that don't have impacts on the ground, but they are components of a proposed action. One is an adjustment of their special use permit boundary. The resort currently operates on a bit over three thousand acres. That's a lot of acres because that includes not only all of the downhill infrastructure on Mount Kumsa, but also the lift that's used in the summer on Snow's Mountain, as well as the expansive Nordic Network. So in order for them to develop and operate this infrastructure, their permit area would need to be expanded to include the proposed developments of the trails and lifting infrastructure, as well as the gondola line where it comes down to the forest boundary at the Mad River. So that would be the, the adjustment of their special use permit area. It's approximately three hundred and thirty-three acres. The other piece, which kind of goes into the next slide as well, is there is this area that's shown farther down the ridge, moving down towards forty-nine, that I can't even read it from here, so I don't expect you to, but it says Alpine Ski Area Expansion. And the proposal is that we re-designate the zoning for that chunk of ground for its primary future purpose to be for ski area expansion. And if we can go to the next slide, this is the map that I was talking about earlier. It's up on the screen. This is our current condition. And Snow's Mountain is down here at the bottom. I guess I'll just point to this one. It's a little bit bigger. Snow's Mountain, the lift is down here. Here's where it extends out on the private property down to the academy. And on either side of the Snow's Mountain area is what is currently zoned for Alpine Ski Area Expansion. Okay, this is what is shown in the 2005 Forest Plan. When that Forest Plan was created, this zoning was rolled over from the previous plan. So this is what has shown since, on Forest Service documents, since at least nineteen eighty-six, probably prior to that. However, nobody has told us it's a great idea to build a ski area over there. The terrain, the land ownership patterns, the exposure, like many of these things equate to not the best place to expand a ski area. And so part of this proposal is to amend the zoning that's in place by the Forest Plan so that it, it would allow the ski area development. So we would rezone this area to Alpine Ski Area, and then down the ridge, this Alpine Ski Area Expansion. So what that does is it sets the stage for us to say, okay, that is the priority use of those acres of land. Any development that is desired there is going to have to go through a process just like this one, with public involvement, analysis, and a decision. The other pieces that these chunks of ski area expansion land that were next to Snow's Mountain would be re-designated to another management area designation that does not allow Alpine Ski Area infrastructure to be developed. So these areas here would become focused on general forest management and recreation, much like the remainder of the lands that surround the valley. There, there are some numbers at the bottom for net loss and gain for management areas. So three hundred and nineteen acres of reduction in general forest area, a slightly larger amount that increases in Alpine Ski Area Management. And then the changes to the other management area prescriptions are single-digit acres, I think four and ten acres respectively. So fairly balanced there. And then lastly, the last piece here is a Second Amendment that is related to Canada Lynx. And so when we created the Forest Plan, we created these Lynx Analysis Units that represent the area that a pair of lynx needs to survive. And within each of those analysis units, we mapped suitable habitat for foraging, for denning. And one of the standards in the Forest Plan says if the suitable habitat within a Lynx Analysis Unit is is, let me try and say this the right way, if more than thirty percent of the land is unsuitable. So if, if thirty percent or more of the land is unsuitable, then we cannot take any actions that would further reduce or impact that habitat unless we're ultimately trying to protect, increase that habitat. In 2005, when the Forest Plan was created, this Lynx Analysis Unit was already below that threshold. So we could do nothing there without violating the plan unless it was to improve habitat. This is also one of the southernmost Lynx Analysis Units on the forest, and and it's important to note that even if we did nothing, it may never reach that seventy percent suitable just based on the type of vegetation and other factors there. But in order for this project to move forward, a Forest Plan Amendment needs to be issued that would exempt this project from that standard from the Forest Plan. And so what was proposed and what we are analyzing is not just exempting this project from that Forest Plan standard, but exempting the permit area and that proposed expansion down the ridge from that one particular standard for the remainder of the life of the plan. So that if the resort gets approved to do this, they build this out, and then five years later, they say, we want to add three more trails. We can view that as trail construction, and we don't have to talk about the impacts on Lynx again. So that is the part of the proposed action. And so there's a lot there. I know that I covered it very quickly. All of this information is on the White Mountain National Forest website. If you go to our project page, you will be able to select the Waterville Valley Resort Expansion Project, and there's a project documents tab, and all of this is in there. I also have a sheet with a QR code. If you know how to use QR codes, you can take a picture of it and it'll, it'll load up the project website for you. It also has just the web address, if you like that as well. The important part here is that we're accepting comments. And we will continue to accept feedback even when the comment period ends on June sixteenth. But we're legally required to have this comment period, and it's important if you want to, if you want to impact the direction of this project, that you submit comments to us by June sixteenth. And the preferred method is an email to this address that is on the screen. It's also in the project website. And if you contact myself, if you contact a representative from the resort, you can contact the front desk or camp and office, we will direct you through that, that email address. But we really, we look forward to people's involvement and input, and that's all I have.
So I just, I know we've gone over time and just want to say
That's okay.
to the board for letting us come in. And this really is a presentation for you guys, so if you have questions, we're happy to take them now, or if you want to follow up with me or Justin later, we can.
Does anyone on the board have any questions at this time?
Not at this time.
That.
I probably have a thousand questions, but.
But not at this time.
I suppose that'll work.
We had a long meeting.
Mark knows how to get ahold of us if.
Yes, I think that'd be the better way to. To do it. Well, thank you, Justin. That was very, that was very informative. Could you just repeat again what the time and how to get to the comment session tomorrow? What that info is?
Sure. So the, the timeline for the project, you mean?
The comment period you have scheduled for tomorrow. That's the last one within the six, within, within the comment period.
So just let me speak to how people find the link.
Yeah, so we have a virtual meeting tomorrow night scheduled from six to seven, and you can find the link to that. Again, if you go to the project website, I'm going to leave this sheet. I'll just leave it with you guys, and it has a QR code as well as a URL address for the project website. You go on there, you go to project documents, you'll see a file that says public meetings, and it'll have information about the one we had last night, and then. and it'll have information about the one we had last night, and then tomorrow night. And it's just a simple, you don't need to download anything, you just join via Teams. We'll be doing a similar presentation and then taking questions.
Thank you, thank you very much. Chief, can you bring the lights back up, please? Thanks, folks, thank you for coming up here, appreciate it very much. If anyone would like to come and take a picture, please, please do, I'll give it a minute while they're.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna put those back.
Yeah. Yeah, why don't you get on the way out? Yeah, good idea, I just wait till I leave. We can all just follow.
Thank you, Justin, I appreciate it. Yeah, that's awesome.
The region below their special use. That's another. It's one where Mark was talking about, they don't want to hit the learn button.
Yeah, I know. That's okay.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Let's move on to our public hearing on the use of unanticipated revenue per RSA thirty-one dash ninety-five dash B. So I want to entertain a motion to move to a public hearing.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Mark, would you like to set the background?
Sure. At town meeting, we appropriated money for our water and sewer emergency repair accounts. And the board made a decision to not fund anything towards continued work with the Department of Environmental Services on the David Britton property down by the Mad River that he donated to the community. We, in two thousand twenty-three, we had a big rainstorm in December and another storm in two thousand twenty-four. Those were emergencies that were declared by FEMA. And they approved projects, approved work that we did during those two storm events. However, they never actually provided us with reimbursement funding. So after town meeting, we were notified that we were going to be receiving a product, a little more than ninety-nine thousand dollars in reimbursement for those activities that we had already done and already paid for. So the board is holding this public hearing by state statute. They can utilize money that was not forecasted at the time of town meeting that are, that comes into the town during the year. They hold this hearing and then they can decide. There is, there are no strings attached to the FEMA reimbursement. So we can utilize this money in any way that the board wants to use it. So the purpose of this is to take public comment on the use of this money for one of these two purposes. So water and sewer emergency repair account, we're adding additional money. We had a water, water service freeze-up on Bean Bender Road this past winter, and a sewer line freeze-up on West Branch River Road also this past winter, and that used up the money that town meeting appropriated in March. So those accounts are pretty much gone right now, so we would like to utilize the money to replenish those. So those are the two purposes, and Mr. Chairman?
And any, any comments from the public? Any input on our plan to use this ninety-nine thousand dollars? Okay, we'll then close the public hearing. Would the board like to discuss it further and take it to a vote?
Do you have other discussion, Dan?
I don't have any other discussion with this particular.
I'll make a motion that we use these funds, the, well, I don't know the exact amount, it's forty-nine thousand.
Forty-nine for the water sewer.
Thousand for the Britain property, forty-nine thousand.
Around numbers.
Yeah, they.
Okay, so forty-nine thousand for the water sewer emergency fund, and fifty thousand towards the Britain land with the, whatever the NHDES requires of us.
Yeah, right.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
All right.
That was easy enough, yes. Privilege of the floor, is anybody here for something that's not on the agenda that they'd like to discuss? Yes. I see, I recognize Mr. Racine.
Oh, okay, sure.
Yes.
John Racine, TriPyramid Condo. So I'm here to represent the association at TriPyramids for our dumpster pad. A year or so ago, maybe two years ago now, we asked the board if we could put in a hard pack and reclaim, and you approved it, and you were gonna take another look at it later on. So I want to make sure everyone's aware that we have that hard pack in there. I think there's some folks in DPW that don't know about it, so I would like you to see if you could let them know about it and discuss it and go over it again, let us know if we can continue to use that as our pad.
Was that noted in your, did you receive, did your homeowners association receive?
We don't have that information yet because our president hasn't shared it, so I'm not sure.
Yes, we, we did identify the pad as needing to be concrete.
Okay, so that went out in the letter?
It did. Yeah.
Okay, so we have another issue. There's a landowner right behind our existing corral, if you will.
Right.
We are right on the line of the other person's property. So we have an issue there of if we tear that down and rebuild a new corral and a new pad, we need some advice on this.
You mean that it's in the setback, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's not really a town issue, but it's a landowner to landowner issue. So we need to, no expression.
Well, they should work with DPW.
Yeah, I was gonna say, have you talked to?
I emailed her two weeks ago. Yes, I've heard nothing back.
Okay.
I asked her to physically come for a site visit, and I would ask Will to come and join us, but I heard nothing.
All right.
Hey, Will, Will attended, we had a, we had a meeting with any homeowners association or condo association that wanted to come in and discuss the letter that they had received. We had that meeting last week, Will was there. We mentioned the TriPyramid enclosure. We will go out there with Will, with the condo association board members, whoever wants to be there, and we will review it. Ducking Will Lambert? Yeah.
Yeah, he's the property manager. Okay, was that?
Is that sufficient?
That's okay.
Yeah.
Uh, but I want to be clear about what you just said about the pad. Can you repeat that, please?
Yes, I said it, and the note that went out in your letter, the hard pack is not sufficient from a staff, staff evaluation. It does not work in the winter to their satisfaction. The regulation says that there will be a concrete pad. And so your, your instructions in that letter that we sent out was to replace the hard pack pad with a concrete pad.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do you have specifications on the pad itself?
Yes, we do.
In that letter?
Uh, it was in that letter, yes.
How deep and?
Yes.
What needs to be put in with it?
The size of it, the material it needs to be made up of, yes. Absolutely.
All of which are in the regulations.
They are in the regulations.
Regulations on dumpster enclosures.
We'll get with you, and like I said, when we talk to Will about it, we'll have an onsite meeting and Will address it.
Okay.
Yep.
And no disrespect, but I would like to know why a concrete pad is the preferred decision as opposed to what we have there now?
Because it provides the most level, the truck must be, the dumpster must be level to fit into the rear end load of the truck. That provides the most level surface, and it provides the best surface for all seasons. So a pavement surface warms up in the summer, the dumpster sinks into it, and the concrete lasts the longest of all the surfaces. That's why we, and if it's a dirt surface, we, it tends to freeze to the ground and causes problems.
I think when, I, I think, I remember the discussion when your homeowners association came to board and asked to do the hard pack instead of the concrete, I believe primarily because of cost. And I think, I think we said, okay, we'll get, uh, let's give it a shot, see if it will work. And I, what I'm hearing from town staff is it didn't work to the level that we needed to work, and therefore you do need to put a concrete pad. You can have that further discussion when you get together with.
On site.
On site on, on the matter. When is the, when is the date that all the plans?
End of July. They have, they have until July to get us the plans, and then they have a year.
A year.
To construct.
End of June or end of July?
Uh, I think we said the end of July.
For the plans?
Yeah, for the plans. So all we're asking for is a written plan, and then we have a twelve-month period to implement that. So you're gonna get another construction season. You can either do it later this year or do it in the spring of next year.
Okay.
Yep.
And you think there's other associations that need to have this done?
Oh, yeah, there, we talked probably about five or six different associations. And there are several commercial entities that'll need to fix their enclosures or their pads.
Just a thought, I would like to see maybe if we could get the same companies to do them all.
Oh, yeah, and Will, because Will does several of the associations, you know, having a single company do multiple sure makes sense.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John. Have you seen someone else for the privilege of the floor?
Well, my name's Bill Spence, I'm on Snow's Mountain Road, I'm also the chairman of the planning board. I'm here to talk to the select board about a letter that I wrote to you on the twenty-eighth of May pertaining to a decision that you made on behalf of a landowner who wanted to build a road within the setback.
A wall.
A wall.
Along the road.
Along the road. So my contention is that you interpreted, reinterpreted, and changed the meaning of an ordinance in order to accommodate this. And in my view and in the view of the planning board, you don't have the authority to do that. So I'd like you to acknowledge that you don't have the authority to do it. And to, while this planning board now is going to have to make an amendment to that ordinance in order to prevent anyone else who decides that he might want to build a wall or any other structure within the setback of his property. And in our meeting of the planning board, we decided that the ordinance makes perfectly good sentence, sense, and that a wall is a wall, and that as it's stated in the ordinance, there is no way to interpret what is written in the ordinance that this wall could be within the setback if it were less than or three feet or less. Uh, this, all right, so my request to you is that you acknowledge that the select board did not have the authority to alter an ordinance, and that you would support our initiative to restate this ordinance in such a way that it would not be possible to build a wall within a setback. Now, the definitions, as it was outlined, I did this in the letter, I'm not going to do that here. But from the point of view of the planning board, the ordinance makes perfectly good sense. And that I listened to the meeting's recordings of the select board, the select board made comments about that the planning board's ordinance was, did not make very good sense, and that there must have been an error in it. And that you decided that this comma was in the wrong place. That is, you made the decision that a wall that's less than three feet in height could be built within the setback of this property. Our view, planning board's view is, this shouldn't have happened. And, okay, then you will also help us or support the proposal of a change to the, this ordinance, this, what I'm talking about in question, about where, that nothing can be built, no structure can be built within a setback. So we're gonna have to modify it, strengthen it, so that it's perfectly clear that a wall is a structure, and it does not belong in the setback.
Let me, let me just give everyone the background on this.
Yeah, you need a little background.
So the, what's at issue here is that the board was asked by a landowner to accept the fact that a wall he would like to build.
A stone wall.
A stone wall, thank you, a stone wall.
Very important.
Would not be subject to a definition of structure, which is in zoning amendment. Excuse me, yeah, in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
And through two meetings, the select board decided that it could treat a wall three feet or less. Stone wall, thank you. Three feet or less as, as we do a fence. So a fence three feet or less is not a structure, and therefore can be put in a setback. The board decided to treat walls the same way. Comma, stone walls.
No, not walls, stone walls.
The same way, so that's the background of it. It was a def, it was a question of whether this wall, comma, stone.
No, not wall, stone wall.
Was a, was a subject.
Is that a wall is a structure.
Except the definition, at least in my mind, it would have been helpful to me is to have a definition of a fence. Because literally as we were sitting here discussing it, the fence was being constructed around the transfer station. And, you know, to my mind, initially I thought, well, a fence, you know, maybe it's more temporary. And I'm seeing these huge, you know, concrete cylinders getting put in to support the fence. And I got to thinking, well, a stone wall versus the fence that's being constructed. And, and many fences are constructed that way, as I'm sure we're all aware, with these huge concrete cylinders in the ground seemed a whole lot more permanent than a stone wall. And to my thinking, a fence is, has a permeability to it that a wall does not. So as we were discussing it, and why I was looking for that definition of a fence, is I thought that a stone wall perhaps could be qualified as a fence. And that was the only reason, I was not meaning to trample at all on the planning board or the zoning ordinance.
What it does is, it puts us in a position now where we're going to have to provide a an amendment at the next town meeting.
Or perhaps a definition of fence.
It, it would be some action, but it would still take an amendment to zoning at town meeting, right?
The, the zoning ordinance, as it's written, makes good sense. And that a wall is a wall, and that there's no confusion about the difference between a wall and a fence. And that a wall specifically stated in the ordinance doesn't belong in the setback of any property.
But you hear my thinking about a stone wall versus a fence and its permeability and its.
Well, the.
Personally, no.
Okay.
The, 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 but I think there's an important procedural point here is that decision was made by the select board, and we noticed it. And so anybody who objected to that decision had thirty days
Right.
to come before the board, or was it, was it, was it to the ZBA?
They have thirty days to appeal the decision.
Appeal the decision to the, to the board. Or to the ZBA, to the ZBA. And, or you could, if you wanted to go, if you wanted to go down the legal path. So that was the time period that the planning board should have appealed to this, and that we should have had this discussion.
I wasn't chairman then.
I understand. So, I mean, but I do need to put that on the record, it wasn't something done that, that was done in the dead of night, there were two recorded meetings, and it was noticed. And it was noticed and it was a thirty day comment period. Um, Dan, you wanted to say something and make a comment?
Well, I had a question. And I had a question relative to um, to the enclosure that's backed up against. The other property which would be in the setback. Right? So is it allowed?
Like the dumpster, dumpster enclosure?
Yeah. This dumpster enclosure that's gonna have one or six, but fence around it or something. We'll, we will check. Where do we?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we'll have to check and see.
We'll check.
I think that.
I can't answer that right here, right? Yeah, I mean, are we getting crosswise once again if we say? Go ahead and build the enclosure.
Well, is there any enclosure there?
Well, I understand that, but it's.
So maybe grandfather.
Clearly in the setback.
We gotta check. We, we'll have to check on that.
The purpose of my being here today is simply to say that I want the select board to acknowledge that you don't have the power or the authority to alter. An ordinance. You, you can't reinterpret and decide for your own purpose that the ordinance doesn't make sense the way you see it and that you're going to change it.
I agree with that.
Yeah, it was never my intention to alter.
I wasn't part of that earlier decision, but I agree with that statement you just made.
So now, what the planning board's going to do is propose a warrant for next town meeting. Or that, you know, anybody can propose a warrant, but it, it's much better if you do it with the consent and the cooperation of the planning board. But we're gonna go ahead and do this to strengthen that ordinance, to make it perfectly clear that a wall is a wall and it doesn't belong in the. Setback of any property, because otherwise other people could decide that it was okay for this landowner to do it. But then I'm gonna build a wall in the setback of my property, walls could appear.
Stone wall, three feet or less.
Three feet or less, whatever, yeah, okay.
So, um.
That's the, that's the. The issue of a, of a fence, that the appropriate or permissible fence was three feet or less.
Yeah.
But to start to discuss that a wall three feet or less is just like a fence.
Stone wall.
Stone wall, okay, I can make a concrete wall, a cement block wall, a, an asphalt wall. From the planning board's point of view, it doesn't belong.
Right, it doesn't define a type of uh, wall, although it, throughout the zoning ordinance, it talks about walls, fences and retaining walls.
And none are defined.
None are defined, but um, as, as you know, uh, we have a permissive zoning ordinance and we accept common usage for those terms. If we try to define every single term in zoning.
We'd have a three hundred page zoning.
Exactly, so we tend to, we try to think about it in terms of common usage, common, common sense, um. I think, yes, the board's action, the select board's action uh, does leave it uh, open to question as to what exactly. Uh, that while the zoning as it's written and the, and the. Select board's interpretation of that uh, particular part of it, uh. Yes, I think would leave open uh, the possibility that others could build a stone wall three feet or, or lower in height. Within a setback and that uh, planning board uh, wants to, it could certainly try to fix that. Uh, at um, by proposing a zoning amendment uh, for town meeting uh, for next, for next year.
Uh, that's like.
So that would be the path forward at this time.
Planning board feels that it has to do that.
Right, as, as a for, as. Uh, with regard to interpretation, I, I would simply, I would simply say that. Uh, the select board does play in the world of zoning ordinance, uh, the select board is the code enforcement. Of the zoning ordinance and we were wearing our code enforcement hats when we made that decision. So, there's disagreement about whether um, the decision, we probably had the right to make that decision, but that was the hat. Under which we made the decision, it was a core code enforcement issue, which is exclusively the purview of the select board.
Okay, I just wanted you to acknowledge it so that this didn't happen again. That you did decide to reinterpret and change the meaning of a zoning ordinance on your own.
I don't think that was ever our attempt and intention, I think we've made that clear.
Okay, that's what happened.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, and I thought I saw another hand up, uh, yes.
I just have a question about, oh, Pat Kacharsky, Whittaville. Um, I have a question around the, the presentation that we heard from the Forest Service. There's a timeframe for comments on, if, on the, whatever they call it, scoping.
Their initial scoping, right?
Is the board intending to comment in that process as a representative of? The whole time? Or leave it up to individuals or, you know, what is your intention? With this whole process, I guess is my question.
Alright, does anyone remember? I, I wasn't intending for the board to uh, come in as a board to make a. Uh, position known on any particular aspect of it, um.
I think as they stated this, this afternoon as well as yesterday. Uh, they wanted as many individuals to be involved with the process as wanted to be, and I think that carries more weight. For individuals to be involved than the board?
I think so, I mean, I, the, the board has weighed in on the project uh, in a certain way. Um, the board was asked, uh, I don't know, what was it, a year or so ago, maybe less? Uh, whether it would support uh, granting air rights over town property for the gondola. And uh, the board looked at uh, the zoning ordinance and the town's master plan. Uh, both of which uh, uh, written to support such a construction, a gondola. And said that it would uh, it would be agreeable, it would support such a thing, although we found out after the fact. That it will take town meeting to decide whether or not to grant air rights over, over town property, so. The board's general position has been supportive, I guess, finally got to the point I was trying to make, sorry about that. But I don't know of any, anyone on the board who wants to talk as a board member to Forest Service.
Well, my, my question really was, are you gonna say that, you know, submit a, uh. Document saying the Board of Selectment of Waterville Valley. Has these comments about this whole process?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm saying no, not, not, I, I have no, I plan to do it unless the other board members were thinking along.
Well, I have a lot of concerns about this entire project with respect to. Issues such as traffic, for instance, parking. Um. And I do believe we need to ask those questions and there are a lot of very difficult and challenging. Questions if this whole project takes place. Um, in particular with respect to traffic. Um, they're proposing to put a parking garage over there. Um, across from.
That's not part of this project, though.
Well, it is in the end because, you know, you're putting a gondola out there and they, at the. Ground station where it starts, it's gonna need additional parking and that ultimately becomes part of this.
So, um.
Yes, it's not part of this very specific piece, but we all need to keep in mind. That if we start funneling thousands of cars through town, that that's going to drastically impact our way of life around here.
I think.
So I do have concerns.
I think the issue of, I saw, I make a, a point, Tim, and I, I, the. Uh, the issue of parking will come up in front of the planning board when an application is submitted. For this, and that will be the area, the place to have that discussion.
Right.
About the impact of traffic or, or parking, I think, yeah.
I, I think we're very early in the process.
Yes, that, I guess I'm saying the same thing, there's no application in front.
Obviously, you guys all know.
Yeah.
Uh, the big thing about the comment period right now is we're commenting on the aspects of the White Mountain National Forest and what environmental impacts.
Those pieces.
They have, and an important part of commenting now is commenting of any concerns the town may have. To any of the environmental impacts of this, this project may occur.
Sure.
Now, I do encourage you to comment because it does make sure that you're part of the process going forward. And it makes you a participant in the, in the NIBA process, so it is important to comment. And it's important for anybody, everyone to comment to be a part, a part of this process. Um, just wanna make sure that we're keeping this under the same.
Right, no, you're absolutely, you're absolutely correct.
With respect to what was presented today, I did ask the question about um, sewer services. From the midstation and such, and I think that becomes an important consideration for us at the town level. Um. Because everybody knows we're upgrading the wastewater treatment plant.
And those discussions will occur, I think, as part of that process, so they're on.
So.
Somewhat parallel.
Yeah, we're gonna have to make sure everybody's on the same page, but it's just, it may not be something to hook to, or there is something to, or whatever. We've got to make sure that all those considerations are taken into account.
But just to get back to Pat's original question, I suspect we're all gonna comment individually, but we had not planned on.
Not at this time, as, as, as a board, and, right.
Do you have a particular reason to that?
There, is there a reason for the board to comment?
Versus individuals, are you saying, are we not all on the same page?
No, so I'm sitting in front of this, Morgan Dean's on his side, um. I think that the select board of town of Waterville Valley that's in the middle of the White Mountain National Forest that is in. For lack of a better term, close partnership with the resort. I do think that your comments as the board from select board meetings, not necessarily getting individuals together of the select board. And saying, these are our comments and this is what we're sending, but to take like the gist of what people are saying and submit that. Under your umbrella does hold a lot of weight, not necessarily, like, obviously there's power in numbers and the more people that comment.
Right.
The better it is, but you guys do hold weight.
So kind of taking like what we hear from the general public as well as our opinions, just sort of providing an extra summary from the board's perspective, is what you're thinking?
I think the question there will be, what would we want to say with regard to? As Tim was pointing out and according to my notes, what Justin was talking about, the EIS deals with the impact on wildlife scenery and hydrology. What is it that the board could say on any of those topics at this point, yes?
I, I just, I asked the question because I went last night to the meeting and that, and after they did. Basically the same presentation that they did here today. We had an opportunity to go in small groups to talk to the experts about. Um. Different issues, you know. One of the things that, that I questioned, they, I was told that that's really, you know. They don't have a lot to do with that, you know, uh, parking was one of the things, you know, I said, you know, you've got all this parking up here now. And, and you're wanting to bring parking, you know, people down to get the gondola into town. They can't, they can't accept comments on that or the amount of water to support. A new, you know, one of the, one of the other questions I had was, you know, you, you're doing snowmaking on the new, on the new trails. You know, that's the proposal, where's the water gonna come from, you know, I mean. Water's in short supply now, you know, and, and you know, the hydrology guy said, you know, well. You know, they can only draw so much out of the lake and, you know, they're gonna build some ponds and I. It just seems like that so many of the issues. Are both a town issue. And an environmental issue with the Forest Service, and it seems like. Um, the, the more people who speak up and, and share their concerns. Or their, you know, support for, I mean, I, I don't necessarily think that. Everything should be negative, I mean, you know, there may be some good parts to this. I just think that, I just was wondering if you were gonna speak for us. Or were you gonna let all of us do our own thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Tim?
I just clarify a couple of issues.
Yeah.
Okay, so in the master development plan, we do state that the town will support efforts for bringing the con, uh, gondola into town. And uh, primarily the reason for that was economic impacts of the gondola coming into town. Second of all, I'm sorry, but we're not in a lack of water, we've never been in a lack of water, it's a misconception because we have low water flows in the Mad River. Um, we currently have a stream gauge that happens every year, we watch our water very carefully and we've never had a problem with water. Just wanna clarify that, we do not in, intend on taking any more water minute by minute out of the, out of the Mad River, however, over the course of the season. There'll obviously be more water, thirty nine acres of additional terrain. So, just to be clear, because we've had that question a few times about the water usage and where we're at with water usage. Second of all, the main purpose of this entire development is to not have more cars in town. It's actually to stop the cars from moving around, this all started from the pedestrian study. We remember the pedestrian study, it's on our website, in the pedestrian study, it says that the impacts of having a gondola in town will reduce car traffic. We're not trying to get people to come into town that are skiing for day skiers. Day skiers will still want to go to our parking lots and boot up just like they have now and ski down from the parking lots into the midstation or. Walk into the lodge and change their boots just like they have been, so the whole plan, which we've been developing over decades. Is to reduce the parking, reduce the movement of cars in our town and increase the pedestrian traffic. I just wanna make it real clear, the whole plan for decades has been to try to reduce the amount of traffic, not increase.
I, I think this is exactly the sort of discussion we're gonna have when the. Application comes in front of the planning board and we deal with things like parking and uh. Uh, other utilities, uh, impact on the town's uh, wastewater system, water, whatever. Uh, but this is an environmental impact statement compact, uh, comment period.
But I welcome the opportunity within the town system too, to, to comment.
There'll be a site plan application for every aspect of this as we.
And that's, and that's when.
And then, like Rich pointed out, we did find out as part of this process already that there's gonna be. Town meeting conversations with the aerial rights wherever the gondola crosses public property. And that is a town meeting vote that has to be taken by statute, so. You're gonna, there will be a lot of conversations in every step here, okay?
I have a follow-up question.
Sure.
For the board. You, if I heard correctly, you initially lessed this project.
What, uh, not quite that sweeping, what, um, what we did was respond to a request. From uh, the resort, Tyrell. To uh, support them uh, with uh, with a letter. Uh, to the Forest Service uh, saying that the select board would be supportive of a gondola. And uh, the uh, resort slash Tyrell needed that letter because they were not able to begin the EIS process.
I understand that, but.
Right, so that's what we commented on.
You're gonna, are you as the board?
Mm-hmm.
Gonna tell the Forest Service that it still has to go to town meeting?
We already, I think we already have.
Oh, you have?
Yeah, no, we have.
We'll make sure.
We, we, I mean, we clarified that.
Okay.
That it will require a town, a ma, town meeting vote, there's another RSA that we were not aware of at the time. With regard to aerial easements as opposed to your everyday easement when we think of easements on the ground. Yeah, Rick.
I changed it.
Yep.
The privilege of the floor, uh, yes.
Rick Smith, fifty-three Boulder Path.
Yeah.
Um. Think I'm gonna, uh, being lazy, I think Rich and I had a conversation about something that I had. Uh, taken issue with last, uh, last summer sometime and seeing all the commercial water sprinklers going on in the rain. Uh, when it rained, I think pretty much it rained twice last summer, once in July and once in August, or July and August, I guess is the joke. Any case, um, at the, at the select board meeting that I came to, I was um, a little bit disappointed, shared my disappointment in not seeing. Sprinkler systems, in-ground sprinkler systems as part of the point system that we used. To charge people for their, their water utilization. Um, at the time it was, hey, good, we're, we're working on that, great, thanks for the input, where else? Uh, we came up with a new uh, methodology, a new um, formula, and I don't believe that's in there, um, yet. And I wanna make sure that this gets factored in, at least, you start talking about, what are we gonna do about that? Because this is potable water, portable, whatever, belongs to that. Uh, being used to sprinkle people's lawns in the middle of the national forest, I'm not a big fan of the. Big grass lawns out.
Big grass lawns out here and all these homes that are being developed now, I don't think it's necessary. We, we talk about in some of our, our, um, zoning ordinances about doing some natural stuff out there. Grass lawns are not natural. Nonetheless, if they're gonna be there, I want them to pay for it. And cover their fair share of.
Right.
What, what that looks like, so.
Um, you could. Yeah, no, thank you. And I want to say upfront, I did not plant, uh, Rick in the audience because I had a question. I was gonna bring to town staff under board concerns about the status of the lawn irrigation.
Next meeting, we will have language.
I think we had talked about a second meeting in June, so I was gonna ask if we were on track.
Yep.
For language to incorporate some kind of surcharge into our, uh, into our billing. Uh, for water, uh, that will, uh, capture these commercially installed irrigation. Systems that have been put so.
But only commercially installed, like, so if somebody has the wherewithal to go and do it themselves?
I will have that. I think that's.
We are not talking about hooking up to a hole, hooking a hose up and a, a regular lawn sprinkler. We're talking about in-ground.
On timer.
Automatic.
Right.
Uh.
Timer.
You know, well. Initially, that's what staff is looking at to identify those properties that have the full system. Not just an outdoor spigot that somebody connects to.
Do we have, I don't believe we have anything about outdoor watering or car washing or whatever.
Well, we, we do.
We do, in the event of a, of a, of drought conditions, there are. Provisions in our regulations that allow the board to limit outdoor water.
We did that a few years. Yeah, and there are different levels depending on the severity of the, of the, the drought.
Yeah. And I will have you know that while my grass is green, I don't water it. If it would stop raining, he could water his lawn.
No other topic for privilege of the floor. I would like to move on to the more mundane minutes, previous minutes. Uh, so, um. I got through the sixteenth, the minutes of the sixteenth and minutes of the twentieth, but I didn't see, I have very minor comments. I haven't had an opportunity to see if you guys made any. Um, any changes to the, to the minutes for those two sets.
Had a couple of minor comments for the thirtieth, um, that I submitted. Sorry, did you say the thirtieth?
No, no, the thirtieth, I still, I think, I, I still, uh. I need to, to.
Oh, no, I guess it was the sixth.
Yeah, I think we got, I think we got an earlier version of the minutes of the thirtieth.
So you got a corrected.
And I haven't had a chance to look at that.
So I would table the thirtieth.
Right.
Yeah.
That's.
You all have commented on the sixteenth and the twenty ninth.
Right.
Okay.
And so if you want, Mr. Chair, you could vote on those two and we'll take up the thirtieth at the next.
That is exactly my intention. My only concern is I haven't seen what comments, given our new procedure. The other board members made. If they were just minor.
Need a minor.
I'm willing to go ahead and vote in favor of them.
There was a typo. Yeah, so we had one typo.
If we're just talking.
In one word.
Grammatical, typographical.
There was a time.
The time in the header was wrong.
That's fine. That, those are, those are mechanical and they're not gonna change the, the meaning of it, so I'm fine with, uh. All right, well, I will propose, uh. Approving the minutes, uh. As amended for sixteen April regular meeting and twenty nine May special meeting of the select board.
Second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
And we'll table the thirtieth, uh, for our next. Thirty April.
Okay.
Thirty. Yeah, you should have.
The one, the last one.
The, that.
Okay.
That, uh, Steve.
And this, does that include the? Special meeting we had. But twenty ninth was the, I'm sorry.
There was one other set that we have, uh, distributed, May sixth. And I did receive comment back from all board members, all very minor comments. It just didn't make the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. That went out after the agenda went out.
Okay. And you got, uh, again, were the comments, uh.
Minor.
Yeah.
Minor.
Yeah.
All right, so, uh.
Amend your motion.
Motion to include the minutes of six May?
Yes.
Twenty twenty five?
Second that as well.
All in favor? All right, so we just have the thirtieth, uh.
Thirtieth is the only one.
That's outstanding.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. New business. So the first item is a road use memorandum, uh, from, um. Direct a noise with regard to A T V U T V usage. So I've read it, I guess you guys have read it. I don't know if you want to make any comments on it now. Chief, you wanted to make a general, uh, comments, but.
I think just to clarify though, it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's not A T V per se, it's A I U V. Which is a very.
How do you say, yeah, right, A I U V.
Different looking vehicle. But it's a very different looking vehicle.
Use. Use vehicle, so it's A I U V, not A T V.
It is a side by side.
Well, it's, it's like a heavy duty golf cart.
Yeah.
Right?
It, it is that, but it.
It, it has a windshield and a roof.
Technically, it's an R S A that allows for agricultural and light industrial use vehicles. It doesn't specify exactly a U T V, an A T V.
Right.
A, a light truck, it's, it's a type of registration that we can put on our resort vehicles. That we're using for light industrial.
Right.
That is. Is the intent to use, if you will, U T Vs or side by sides?
I'll come to Mike. So the intent here is that we drive F two fifties around. The reason we're using old F two fifties primarily is due to the fact that we can't drive anything else on the roads in town. So in order for us to get between our facilities from Snow's Mountain, from our conference center, from the. Town square, things of that sort, we have to use a truck that's really suited for, you know, going down the highway at eighty, ninety, a hundred miles an hour. Instead of using something that is meant to climb a mountain and go over rough terrain. Um, I was made aware of this type of, uh, licensing through our, our P D. And we started to work together and trying to figure out if there's a applicable way for us to utilize. This type of licensing, licensing to, to be used for vehicles that never leave town, never go over the speed limit, never go over forty miles an hour. Um, and are staying within a two mile radius of our, of our complex.
So what type of vehicles were you talking about, like the side by sides, right?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm talking, uh, A T Vs, A T Vs, U T Vs, even some of our light trucks, um, we have a mini truck that we use. Um, we have different vehicles for different applications to use throughout the resort. And a big thing is they don't, we don't want them leaving the valley. We want them to stay as, as, and be utilized.
I can accept that. Um, the question I have, and I keep asking about types of vehicles, has to do with the noise.
Yeah.
Um. I did a little research today in cars doing twenty five miles an hour. Um. Typically range about in this low sixty decibel range. Uh, a U T V doing twenty five miles an hour is typically about eighty five decibels.
Okay.
So those, so that I'm concerned. About the noise impact, if you will, or the potential noise impact, and that's why I ask these questions.
May I address that?
Sure.
Okay, so the, what you're using is typical sounds from a, a moving vehicle from a car, correct?
I.
Is that where your data is coming from?
Yeah, I was looking from vehicles.
Okay, so what we currently drive is an F two fifty.
No.
Mountain tires. An F two fifty is gonna be much louder than a U T V.
It's probably gonna be in the seventy range, during that range, I think.
So U T V, the current U T Vs, A T Vs that we, that we use are much smaller motor with a much lighter chassis. That's why they climb the mountains better. Those are not gonna be, in my, in my opinion, nearly as loud. As an F two fifty that has a three hundred horsepower motor.
There's a, there's an ordinance issue here in that we do not measure decibels in our noise ordinance.
Though we may not, but I'm.
So.
Concerned about the noise here.
We could be, and, and the issue of noise has come up in the planning board on a number of occasions. But currently, as the zoning ordinance and the select board ordinance reads. Uh, we do not have anything to base a decision, anyone can use to base a decision on decimal level.
Just time constraints within which they.
We can, we can get at it other ways, which I think is what, uh, Chief Noise, uh, was going to recommend, or is recommending.
Yeah, the way that we get it is the equipment of the vehicle, so. It can't have any modified muffler system, it can't be in, uh, ill repair, it has to be intact. So the way that we look at it is, you know, these vehicles commit with, with a, with a factory. Um, muffler system. If at any point that they're not working properly, uh, and they're beyond of how they came out of the showroom. Then that's an inspection, uh, that's an inspection rule violation. Uh, that's, that's how we address that sort of thing. Uh, on the road, and that goes with motorcycles. That goes with tractor trailer trucks, that goes with everything that's.
Yeah, there's several paragraphs, I think, in our ordinance on car noise from vehicles, to include music coming from vehicles, I think.
Yeah.
But no decimal levels.
No, there, there is no, there is no decimal level. And in the noise, uh, ordinance, uh, the way that it's. We changed it many years ago to reference vehicles was the revving of vehicles, the. Uh, the burnouts, the, the revving, uh, give us an ability to write a town ordinance. Over for that type of activity that creates that noise from, from an engine and, and to include the. Um, the music. From there, but, uh, so these vehicles, it's, the statute is very specific as far as what is required equipment. Uh, for this to be operated on the roadway. So you have two processes here. You have a registration process, and then you have an operation. Process, okay? They can register these all day long, and if you don't restrict them, they can drive on the roads. Uh, subject to all the items within the statute that outlines. How they're operated, has to be a licensed driver, uh, they have to follow all the motor vehicle rules of the road. Uh, and also all the equipment, uh. Requirements. So on the registration part, what we have to do well, where I see they're becoming. Um, conflicts or interpretation issues is towns not being educated enough on what qualifies. Getting it wrong, okay, and then we've now leaving it up to enforcement. To say, how did you get this plate and what is it doing here? Uh, kind of thing, so. For us, we would have to have a very. Um. Established checklist, so to speak, to. Uh, what qualifies to, in order to do the town portion of this. And then it's your decision on however you want to manage it within the town public ways. Uh, so there's two, two separate issues here.
So I guess we have three options, right, in, in all cases. One is to, is to ban them completely. The other option, the other side is to do nothing, which means per state law, they could operate, uh, on, uh, public roads. And the third is to place some restrictions, uh, on the use of the vehicles. So, I mean, I think placing restrictions is the obvious, obvious choice here, if they're not. You know, so restrictive that they're practically banning. I don't, I'm not saying we, I'm saying we don't want to do that. We want to find. A workable, a workable, uh, solution here, and I think, Chief, you had mentioned time.
Yeah, most places where, uh, and I, I make this reference for. Uh, O H R Vs are allowed, and this isn't that, this is separate. Uh, that are allowed in most of the towns that do that, it's a half hour before, uh, sunrise and a half hour after sunset. It eliminates, uh, these vehicles being operated in the dark. Uh, seeing how we've got some pretty limited, uh. Uh, lighting in around town, and they don't typically have a full P O T. Uh, equipment like your normal passenger car has, um. Uh, my recommendation is half hour before sunrise, so a half hour after sunset. So a full daylight operation, and when they're on the road, you can see them. Uh, as far as restricting some roads, I would say no restrictions on the roads, one. It allows some consistency for our staff to be able to, uh, enforce it, but it also. Um, uh, doesn't create, uh, having the general public or. Anyone operating these going, oh, I didn't know I could go here and not here, kind of thing. And then that's gonna lead to more signage.
Right.
Uh, and which I don't think we, which I don't think that we want. So, um, you know, my recommendation is, let's, uh, I would, I would like to see them not operated at night. Uh, but not, uh, totally restrict, um, their use on. Town on public ways. Now, that doesn't go for private ways. If, uh, condo association or any of the private ways say, yeah, we don't want them. It still gives them the ability to, to restrict them.
So my concern, once again, it still gets back to potential noise issues. And I believe before sunrise, people are still sleeping, and I do have concerns about that. Um. What is your intent slash need to use them that early? I can see obviously up towards the mountain. That seems to maybe make sense, but you don't have a lot of houses and people living up there. Down in the valley here.
What time the sun sets and rises in the fall?
Yeah. Yeah, and it varies through the year, obviously, right? So. I'm reluctant. To allow something that early. But I understand, you know, there's both sides of this coin, right? That we have to think about. I'm not necessarily, I'm not saying I'm against this. I'm just trying to make sure that we balance the community's needs, because the first thing that's gonna happen if. If people start getting, you know, woken up from this. First thing that's gonna happen is our phone's gonna start ringing off the hook. And people are gonna complain as, as they should, if you will.
Then you can adjust.
So.
You can adjust your rules at that time. Hey, because we don't know exactly what's gonna happen. Right now, we're speculating.
Right.
And so if we go forward with this, obviously, this is gonna be a work in progress.
Yeah.
You do have a lot more flexibility with this rule over how you can enforce this. For instance, you don't, for an inspection, there is no inspection plate that I would have to have on these vehicles, however. The police department would be able to pull these vehicles over at any time and give them inspection. So they actually, they, they'll need P C, they can just pull them directly over. So it does give the town some actual, some benefits in that, in that direction. Plus, you have some controls, you have some levers that you can pull. And we can work together to see how we can move forward.
Well, working together is absolutely what we should do in this regard. Um, I'm all for working together. I think that's very important to the town. Um. What I would recommend.
Yeah.
Is that part of this becomes an education issue as well for the people driving these types of vehicles. And it has to be made clear to them, they can't be, you know, revving them up, racing them down the roads just to make. Noise, which happens sometimes. Um. You know, certainly, we see it occasionally from.
These are commercial vehicles.
Oh, I understand. My, I drive a side by side, my son's got one.
Yeah, but we're not talking about that.
They make noise.
No, we're, but we're talking about commercial vehicles that are used for, as a tool for us to do our job. We're not talking about a recreational vehicle of any means.
Right. So if I could just, you know, I think address both points perhaps, like just looking and double checking, so. Within those time guidelines, say tomorrow, you know. It would, the vehicles would be allowed to be on the road starting at four thirty A M. But we're talking commercial usage, so the reality of you hiring someone to start working at four thirty A M is, I'm assuming, pretty slim.
Yes.
Right, so.
Well.
The realities of the actual workday as well as the.
And any outdoor, uh. Work there, uh.
Can't be generated.
Can't begin till eight A M or nine on.
Exactly.
Nine on, um, Saturdays, I think it, not at all on Sunday, on federal holidays, so. I think that's how you, you, you deal with that.
Tim, but they're used for normal commercial use. In a controlled, sane way, I don't have any issues with it.
Why don't?
If people. Take the fact that they have a vehicle that can be used, if you will, for off-road type. Work, then that's, that's where the boundary.
That's where enforcement.
That's when the boundary gets.
More than one entity, I'm imagining.
You know.
Of course, yeah.
Why don't we move forward? Why don't we move forward with uh. Uh with uh, heads had to call it a temporary decision, but it to say a six-month decision, uh something to see how it works out based on. On uh chief noises, recommendations. Uh you know, half hour before sunrise, half hour after sunset. And uh let's see how that. Let's see how that works out and we just, we can revisit it anytime.
Yeah.
It's not, it's this is a board decision, it doesn't require us.
Can I, can I just stop one minute for you there?
Right.
Cause I have another question that impacts the times. What times do you believe you will need these, really? Because uh and at the other end of the day, half hour after sunset. That may not be long enough, if you will.
Can I just think before you answer that?
Yeah.
I think Tim is being the de facto spokesperson for this.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
But realize that he might not be the only commercial person.
No, it could be any, any.
Well, I understand that, yes, yes.
Who else would fit? Property managers, property managers.
Yeah, they have, they have a place of business in the town.
And that's the other thing we'd want to, I think, I I think we'd wanna have the, within the two mile. Right, two miles.
Two miles of the place of business here in town.
Right, for the light industrial.
Covers all of town.
Right, yeah, since we're, yeah, one square mile thereabouts, right.
Uh so. That's right, you might be the largest user.
He's not the only commercial entity that may be interested in.
Right.
In doing this, so that's why I'm trying to think of it as a, from a ten thousand foot view.
Yep.
Looking at this, not specifically just the mountain, but you know.
No, absolutely, it's a good way.
And it's not the, the uh regular resident that can do this either. You have to be tied to a business, you have to have a business here.
We're not talking about some souped-up golf cart that we've been using to go around town.
And satellite business, okay.
Well, again, I mean, you, you, you have to write the regulation of a rule to cover the, the intended use and anything. If you try to write it to the exceptions or the things that could happen, it'll be overbroad.
Right, right.
So, and that would be a cause potentially for enforcement action if it was.
Yeah, that's why I didn't.
Right.
Want to make it too restrictive either in my recommendation because. I'm thinking not only just of uh, you know, his business, but the other businesses and.
Right.
The potential to use of this.
And again, we can come back at any time and say, we changed our minds.
You can have that.
As long as it's within the RSA. So I think let's, let's get the ball rolling with some kind of.
Yeah.
So, some kind of.
There are important considerations for us here and that is um. It will take a considerable investment. To, you know, swap out all your trucks and vehicles to do this sort of thing, so any decisions we make. We really can't make, if you will, lightly, because we do have to have some regard for the local businesses.
So to that point, it wouldn't be, obviously, I wouldn't be going and trading all the trucks in for U T Vs tomorrow. We'd wanna be taking this as a slow approach, because we obviously, we wanna be partners in this and we wanna make this work for everybody. And ideally, we have uh uh you know, different vehicles for different applications and this would allow us to run more effectively, more efficiently and. Most importantly, more professionally, um and so this isn't something that we can jump in tomorrow, it's not something that's gonna be. You know, perfect right off of the bat, I realize that, we're gonna be working together to make sure that this works for the community and for the businesses. That was a good point about the property manager.
Other, other businesses.
Yeah, and there could be other businesses.
So how do we wanna structure this then?
Um, I mean. I think your six months, is that reasonable from your perspective, Tim, it it takes a month to give it a try and.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be at least a month or so before I have any of these vehicles registered. And I have to go through the registration process, we have some vehicles already in our fleets that will qualify for this, but we have to. You know, update some others and have to register them and get those in, so it's gonna be a little while, but over the summer and the fall, we'll probably get a pretty good idea, we'll come back and.
Exactly, so.
Yep.
Okay, and go with the recommendations, so be a half hour before, half hour after, uh local. Business which fits within the two-mile radius, right, of the state law, any other uh.
There, there have been occasions where.
All roads, right.
Special event uh happens and they need to operate late. I would just um ask that you give us the latitude to allow.
Yeah.
On very limited occasions of. Gonna operate, so say they had some special event and we could dictate when and where. Uh so, for example, it's not, uh in the northern towns, they do, they do the half hour. Uh before and after, uh but sometimes there are late. Uh people that are out late for whatever reason, they're in the, on the trail system and and don't get out. They call the P D and say, I'm gonna be operating on the roads, but I'm just going home.
Sure.
And we can say.
Right.
Yes, as long as you're not going to town, you're not going here, you're not going there. Will give you, will allow you to operate uh on a limited capacity as long as they call. And we can make that call, that it's not, uh it's not gonna be a constant thing, but if it's just in those special occasions that something happens.
Should we codify this, I mean, should we have some written?
Yeah, but I wouldn't, it's not an ordinance, it's the implementation and I think, Dave, if you.
Regulation.
Do a document that states that half hour before, half hour after. Um that states a uh inability of the officers to have discretion. In cases, we can even add it to the special event list that we're building.
Sure.
So that that can be something that, you know, U T Vs may be part of this.
Emergency response.
And emergency response, that's gonna, you know, and and just try to capture.
Capture it in writing so that it's clear.
Write it down.
Yep.
Yeah, it gives us a little bit of latitude to.
Yeah.
Right, you can always write a provision in there that's.
So just um come up with a written. Uh implementation of the decision to allow the use.
We'll have to do it anyways, just.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna want it anyway, you're gonna need the policy anyway.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
So, I mean, the general thing is all roads, the time. And um will it, will have a written.
Yeah.
Document, right.
Uh obviously, the preamble would be within the RSA, with all the restrictions of what these things are and. What, what equipment they are required to have, et cetera, et cetera.
We can do that.
I think a recommendation on the registration procedure.
Sure.
Uh for the town staff, uh I think it would make it a little easier for, that way there's no. No mistakes being made as far as what that we run into and something that's not supposed to be on the road is on the road.
Right, yeah.
Um.
We'll, we'll come up.
But yeah.
Okay.
We can, I, I can get something and and you can put it to a vote for next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
We'll have it on the agenda.
Gender for our meeting in two weeks.
So we'll call it an implementation document.
Implementation document, policy, regulation, whatever.
Wanna stay away from those things.
These are speaking in the RSA that actually take, that spells out what this would be, what it would be called. Language in the RSA about it, yeah.
Uh something, okay, I think.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, if there's nothing further than that, there's some more nuts and bolts here, backhoe replacement purchase.
Yep, you received a separate uh email. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye now.
Uh so we received uh three different lease options for the backhoe. We've selected the model uh and um implements that we need. Uh to utilize, if I say anything wrong, bump in the head. Um so we have three leases, uh three lease options. Um two from Kansas State Bank Lease, which we've been working for, are working with for years. Uh and then the actual um provider Milton Cat. Uh where we are getting uh the backhoe from. Um I outlined, and our staff recommendation to you is that we purchase the backhoe. And utilize the Milton Cat Lease. Uh the purchase price is one seventy-eight-five with a trade-in value for our existing J C B. Of forty-two thousand five hundred, um leaving an amount to finance of a hundred and thirty-six thousand. Which is within the authorization that town meeting approved.
How much did town meeting approve?
A hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Okay.
Um so we're well below that.
Yep.
Um we are recommending the Milton Cat Lease. Uh which credits us for the first year payment utilizing the trade-in value. And then has an annual uh payment of forty-seven, four fifty-four, sixty-six. For the last three years of the four-year lease. Total cost to the town is a hundred and eighty-four thousand eight sixty-three ninety-five.
On the.
So.
K S State Bank one.
Yep.
You show a line that just says trade value.
Well, yeah, so.
Can you explain this?
Yep, so the, the Kansas State Bank Lease is a, a tip, a traditional four-year lease. Where we actually make four payments to them.
Yeah.
Unlike the Milton Cat. So we would make four payments of the thirty-six thousand nine seventy-one. The forty-two-five is in there to show you the total cost to the town. So the total cost of the Kansas State Bank Lease program you using that. Is a hundred and ninety thousand three eighty-seven.
Right, but the forty-two thousand five hundred dollars, are we giving them back?
No, no, they're, they're taking it off the purchase price.
It's, it's the trade-in value.
It's the trade-in value for the current J C B. But it does go to the total cost of the equipment, the new equipment.
What's the cost of the four payments? The four times thirty.
Thirty-eight oh seventy-eight ninety-five.
It is one ninety-three eighty-seven minus the forty-two five hundred.
Which would be?
It is five thousand five hundred and twenty-three plus six thousand three hundred and sixty-three. It's, it's eleven thousand dollars more, it. I, I, I just tried to simplify it for the board to a total cost to the town.
Yeah.
It's, it's a hundred and eighty-four thousand versus a hundred and ninety thousand.
Yeah, it's nice to save that five thousand five hundred.
And we also will have forty-three thousand dollars, which was appropriated as part of the. Twenty-twenty-five budget that was approved by town meeting, which will go to fund balance.
Mm hmm.
So in addition to the five thousand dollar savings, from a tax perspective. We have the forty-three thousand that'll go to fund.
Right, we don't have to spend it.
I believe that's accurate, I may have included some revenue in the miscellaneous revenue line for the trade-in value of that. I know I did for the ambulance, I just have to double check to see if.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, but I know it wasn't forty-two thousand.
It wasn't forty-two thousand.
Right. So I think we need to have a vote on whether to, a further discussion, um. Or we need to vote on.
People see this, it's gonna look like we're buying something more. Inherently, it looks like you're buying something more expensive.
Why?
It just, because they'll see the thirty-six nine seventy-one and they'll.
But it's thirty-six times four and forty-seven times three.
Yeah.
So it is less than.
Yeah, I think people will see that. And if not, it's an easy thing to point out.
Yeah, we just need to make sure that that's clarified enough so that it doesn't. Raise questions.
Yeah.
Well, I can, I mean, it could raise questions, it's a simple answer.
Well, I know, but it's.
Right.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's the Milton Cat Lease.
People tend to flame out first and.
Right, but the Milton Cat Lease, just to be clear, the first year, we're not making a payment.
So here's.
Taking the trade-in value for the first.
I have the answer, I have the answer, Dan.
Three payments versus four.
We have the three, the four payments of thirty-six thousand nine seventy-one is a hundred and forty-seven thousand eight eighty-seven.
Okay.
The three payments are forty-seven thousand dollars a year.
Yep.
Is a hundred and forty-three thousand nine thirty. So.
Okay.
That's the difference.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need a vote on this?
Yeah. So I'll make a motion that we accept the Milton Cat Lease for the backhoe purchase. Do you need anything else?
Uh there's, there are, as specified in the documents, because there are resolutions and wording. And also that you authorize the town manager to complete the necessary paperwork to complete the purchase.
All that, yes, that's my motion, thank you.
Well, second that.
Oh, in favor?
I agree.
Can you repeat that motion, please?
That'll be first things problem. Should have to get together with Steve.
Chris, can you repeat that motion, please?
Authorized to complete the pay.
Complete the paperwork on the matter, right?
I was just kidding.
All right, so move on to the uh bond paperwork.
Okay, where are we now?
It's item uh five C.
Five C.
And it's the, it's the uh, it's the bond from the bond bank.
Yep.
Paper, it's even a lot on screen. So this is the certificate of vote in a loan agreement for the bond issue this summer.
Yes.
So we need to approve and sign the bond paperwork as presented. Do you have something?
I do, and Steve, do you wanna?
Present with the town man.
Um yes.
Select word to consider.
Steve's gonna, Steve's gonna give you the link.
All right, have at it.
So over the past uh four to six weeks, I've been involved with the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Banks. Uh pre-application process to acquire the uh municipal bonds that uh were approved that town meeting. Um two point four million of which were gonna be used towards road repair projects and engineering. And two hundred and fifty thousand of which will be used for the second half payment of the uh ambulance that we're acquiring in September.
And we agreed to roll all this into the one issue this time.
That's the way it works at the bank.
Right, but I mean, we decided to get all the money.
Yes, all the money.
At once.
Now, rolled into one issue, uh the first five years, you'll see a higher payment, principal payment and interest payment. Cause that'll incorporate the ambulance amortization and the full fifteen years incorporates both the ambulance and the road money. Should see that schedule in your way packet.
And so the vote is to approve the application as presented. And to authorize the chair to complete the paperwork, because. This is not a, all the board signs, this is one member of the board signs the paperwork, so. That would be the motion with the appropriate resolutions that are included in the. Documents and authorizing the chair to.
In the event of default.
On payments that comes out of Rich's salary.
Yeah.
That's fine by me.
We have insurance for that.
In your packet, you'll notice another document, it's called the certificate of vote.
Right.
That only requires town clerk's signature, which was taken care of today, but this does. Outline the worst-case scenario of the interest rate, which they have as four point seven five percent right now.
Right.
Historically, the bond bank has come in lower than the worst case. And we're hoping for that to happen on this sale as well.
But we don't find out that rate until that actual.
Until the sale actually happens.
See what interests and bond sales are crazy these days.
They are.
Who knows?
And so we're actually, uh the bond bank will be doing a negotiated sale rather than a competitive bid sale. So that we can pick the day.
Mm hmm.
That we do it, so we're gonna select a company.
Mm hmm.
Uh a firm to do the sale, so it will be negotiated. And uh with a two hundred and fifty million dollar total sale. We should be able to command a pretty good interest rate.
So Mark, with respect to that sale and you say pick a date or a day.
Yeah.
Um that can't go on on.
No, 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 it's, it's gonna be within a one, one week time period that the board, the, the bond bank board has. Said that you gotta do it by this date, so that we can distribute the funds in August.
For the sake of our public here, when do we anticipate? For the sake of our public here, when do we anticipate that would roughly be?
It'll be sometime in July.
Sometime in July, okay.
So that we can get the sale completed and get the money out to all the communities that are participating.
And the, from a budgetary standpoint, there will be no impact in twenty-twenty-five. The first payment on this, on the sale will be in January twenty-sixth. And that's all to the impact. So we'll incorporate that in our goal, in our budget.
Yep.
Very good. Alright, so we need a motion, so I guess to allow me to sign this document.
I move that we, what, accept this loan agreement as written and authorize
The chair.
Our board chair to sign it. On behalf of the Town of Waterville Valley.
And you don't need to sign it right this second, but before you.
That's good, that's good enough.
That is.
Can I get a second on this?
Oh, in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Let's move on to O business. So the first item is the, uh, report by D P W on the cease and desist letter. And what has happened since then with regard to the stone wall. So I, I haven't had a chance to read this. I think I just.
No, we just, you just got it.
But this is, uh.
This is a letter from the D P W to me.
Aye.
And then I provided you with, um, with a, uh, cover memo. So, um, we as town staff and myself had discussions with the property owner. Um, when the board adopted the cease and desist and the implementation letter, which I put in your pattern.
Yep.
Okay, um, you required the removal of the material from the right of way. We did negotiate with the property owner.
Right.
To remove a portion of the material. Um, and then, um, make other, uh, improvements to ensure proper drainage uh, into the catch basin. Uh, Megan's letter is here and she can answer any questions that you have from it. But she addressed modification of the site grade, functionality of the drainage system. Establishment of vegetative cover, the grass and future catch basin maintenance. And so far, he's met all of the requirements.
I know.
That she has put on him, he has loamed it.
Mm-hmm. Has he seeded it yet?
No.
He has not seeded it yet.
He's in, he's in progress.
He's trying to get it before the rain.
The rainy Saturday.
Yes, he's trying to get it seeded.
Fourteen weeks.
I think we might get it Thursday.
Yeah. So, as far as the grade though, we do need to clarify that the grade is where the catch basin is.
Correct.
Yeah, he is not.
Because just for, since I've made such a big deal over the stone wall aspect. This negotiation does allow for the stone wall to be covered to appear more of an earthen wall. Which is different in character. But that earthen wall does not create a new grade.
That's correct.
And the grade is measured from the catch basin.
That's correct. And the swale that we talked about on the, at the special meeting while we were on site. That swale area, that low area is going to feed into the catch basin at its existing grade. And it has been doing.
Cause you can see the dirt.
Because you can see where the dirt has been going into it.
Right.
And paragraph three of my memo says, in addition to continuing the work that he's doing with the looming and seeding, he's agreed to two other things. Once the grass is established, he will clean out the, uh, catch basin. And we are gonna calculate the staff time and cost. And he's gonna reimburse the time because we did take equipment and people over there uh, to help him remove the material and form that swale.
Yep.
So we will bill him. And then if you want to do a letter.
We're going to have to approve that bill or anything like that at board level?
No.
Okay. So there'll be no action on our part beyond this?
Okay.
So, um, the one thing that's not mentioned in any of this is actually the key point. It doesn't relate to D P W. And it deals with the grade. Is this three feet or lower?
It's what?
It's, it.
Is it three feet or lower? Is the top of the stone wall from the grade and the posts he put up, are they three feet or lower?
Yes, are the posts?
The posts are three feet. I think there are probably two rocks that are higher than three feet.
By inches?
I, I don't know the.
That, I'm, just to clarify.
I haven't, I haven't looked.
And this is not the grade.
No, that's why I said at the beginning.
It's the.
I said at the beginning, it didn't relate to.
Yeah.
But that was the fundamental point before we went into this, not thinking we'd have to be dealing with drainage and grade.
Yep.
Yes.
And moving earth into town right away, that was the whole point. Is that it would be not considered a structure and a setback if it was three feet or lower.
Yep.
Right.
We can go out and measure it. I can't answer that question.
I think as part of this process, we do need to give them an extension anyway, right? Because I think that thirty days, so why don't we, uh, look for an extension to our next meeting and then deal with that. I mean, I'd like to see somewhere reflected in, in, uh, the documents that this is as, as per the, uh, as, as per the agreement. That this would not be considered a structure. Therefore, not, not be, uh, subject to setback, um, restrictions. That the, that the wall is three feet or lower. Now, if there's a few inches here, they just point them out. And let the board make the decision.
Yeah, right, yep.
If that's, uh, if that's satisfactory.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess what we need to do is, uh, do we agree on a two-week extension or at least, I think it ends at the sixth, so it's a little less.
Yeah, two-week extension.
To the next meeting.
Fine, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I do think it may take longer to get the grass to establish itself than, you know, July fifteenth in here or something like that.
But he's a professional grass bowler, so let's see what he.
Yeah, I've been trying to grow grass for a while. It's gonna take a little while.
Yeah, well, we can always approach it then if it's about two.
I mean, I think he's trying to grow, he'll try, be trying to grow grass.
For some reason.
What you call established versus at a reasonable maturity level, maybe two different things. It's gonna take a while.
Well, we'll just really, we'll, we can, we can address that if we need to, our next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I, I.
Okay.
Okay.
Nature is fickle.
Right, sure is. Thank you, Megan. Thank you for working through all this, uh.
Yep, thanks for working out with Craig on this. We appreciate.
Larger projects slash issue than I think we anticipated.
Yep.
And speaking of large projects.
Yeah, you gotta make.
Oh, sorry. Uh, yeah, so I'll make a motion to extend the deadline for a cease and desist letter from sixth June to our next meeting of eighteen June.
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty-five.
Could we go to the twentieth, just to get, like, so you're gonna make a decision on?
Oh, yeah, twentieth's fine.
So the twentieth.
Right, so make it a full two weeks, a two-week extension?
Yeah.
Two-week extension.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
To determine if the, the, the owner is complying with the board's directors.
All in favor?
All in favor, yes, uh, uh, now we can move on. So paving.
Yeah, so.
It's begun.
It has begun, uh, so Monday, you wanna tell them about?
Yeah, so, um, Piper has been bringing in material and equipment to the, um, staging area that they built last year, um, and they plan to start cutting low-hanging branches or foliage that, um, may affect the work on Jennings Peak Road. So we'll be starting with that on Monday. And then from there, they will be moving into, um, any excavation work, all of the culverts, um, or call retaining wall, but the retaining wall, uh, that goes outside.
Right.
It's not the setback, I hope.
Soon it's down right away, but that's okay in this case.
They will be working on that, um, and they're hoping to have, um, base pavement done, um, by the end of this month.
Okay. For the entire length.
The entire length.
Just up to the base.
Just the base coat, so it'll be paved, but the finish coat will be put on when they have an opportunity. Which is actually okay because we get some settling traffic over it.
Yeah.
It'll be after July fourth, they have vacation for a week for July fourth.
Okay.
And the price, there was no change in the price, which is a price they originally gave us a year ago.
Yeah.
So we're very appreciative of that.
And this is the one where we had to get approval from?
Uh, wetlands permits from D E S. That's what we were waiting on.
Okay, and all that's in place, we're all set.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Good.
Okay, that's good.
Any other paving projects? I noticed some, uh, will look more like pothole fixing up by Livermore.
Yeah.
Around there, work around there.
Paving company in town, uh, their idea of little, and our idea of little is completely different. But they informed us, say, hey, we have a little bit of, um, asphalt left. Would you like to use it? Obviously, we said, sure.
Yeah.
You know?
When, when can you never use asphalt?
Right.
So, um, when we saw the amount, um, we had them dump it right at the entrance that goes down to the Britton Land.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
See a patch there as well, just to help grade that off a little bit better.
Yeah, I saw it.
Uh, we took the skid steer, trucked it to a couple of different locations, just to.
Up on West Branch and.
Pretty large potholes that had covered over the winter, so.
Is there any of that left?
There's not.
Okay. Um, the, uh, the other true paving projects are the week of July seventh.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the work on the Golden Eagle Lot, Lodge Parking Lot will begin. When that is completely done and they pave it. They will come out of that entrance and then they will move directly into Packard's Road.
Okay.
As soon, that should be a day or two. It's just an overlay, right? There's nothing special there. So when they finish with Packard's Road, they're gonna move their equipment to Noon Peak.
Okay.
And they will do the overlay of Noon Peak after Packard's Road.
What's the status of the easement agreements with them?
With who? We, we have, we just signed a, the letter to have the meeting, uh, with the Golden Eagle Board.
We're shooting for end of July.
End of July.
For them to have an initial proposal.
Okay, will they come here with that or?
Um, we're gonna do a small group meeting initially, so it doesn't.
Okay, we, we set up, uh, I think, well, it was a meeting we weren't here.
No, he, he's gonna be working on easements in general.
Right, but I think on this.
This was special to, uh, to town.
Down core working group, so Wendy was gonna head up the meetings on, on all of this.
Just for the.
Otherwise, if it's, it becomes a.
Questions and concerns on, with respect.
Yeah.
There's no decisions to be made without bringing.
What we, what we're going to do is have their attorney draw up what they want.
Right.
So that our attorney can review it.
Right.
Rather than have, rather than us spend the money to draw up the deed, because that general, or the easement, that generally takes more work than revising it.
Right.
So.
Right. Yeah. But we wanna get the parameters as close as we can.
We're, that's part of the negotiation, yep.
Speaking of the Golden Eagle back, back path, it was completed and paved.
Yeah, I walked it today. It looks good.
Took down the caution tape and everything, um, it's been backed up.
Lower the, the.
Drop line.
Yes.
And we did back up the pavement where the grass and stuff is, um. We are talking to companies right now about the possibility of doing handrails.
Right.
That was a question.
For one, yeah. Cause I've been soaking with the Golden Eagles about with their planning for handrails.
We're gonna coordinate, we're getting some information so that we can talk to them.
Okay.
They need two, one on each side.
I don't know.
I, people use the handrails a lot.
We're gonna, we were planning on one.
Well, yeah, we have.
Just from a maintenance standpoint, let's look at the options and the cost.
And it'll depend on what Golden Eagle does because.
They're not doing anything.
Well, the handrails aren't gonna be, they're not putting any handrails on their part of their property, are they gonna be?
Not right now, let, we need to find the options.
Alright, let's see what they.
Work with them.
So it'll be the same style and, and.
It is one railing that comes down.
Right, they had extensive railing too.
Yes, they have it on, they had it on both sides.
Right.
It had fell into a little bit of disrepair.
Right.
It, it does get.
It takes a, it gets beat on.
Yeah.
When it gets slick out there.
Bars for the.
You need one going down and you need one going up, if you will. So, so you may need it on both sides.
Well, thankfully with the paving, it will be easier to keep it clearer.
And we're gonna do some branch clearing, get some more sun in there, especially in the winter.
Good.
And we'll work that out.
Good. Great.
Are we doing anything with that little sitting area off to the side?
That's theirs.
That, that is there?
No, that's right.
We, we do plan, we're gonna make it a little nicer, we're gonna, some of the trees were already cut, we're gonna come through, just maintenance it a little bit. Check out the benches, make sure, uh, cause I believe there's two in there, just to make sure that they're, um, still usable.
Do you even wanna have it, I guess is the question I was wondering.
It is nice.
Do people use it? I never noticed. They do? Okay. Good, no, as long as people use it. Never seen anybody. We can put a light right there.
Dave knows, he's been there.
Okay.
Lover's lane. No, the other, the other thing, yes.
Well, yeah, we gotta have a lover's lane in town.
Well, it's, it's also, yeah.
Other things happen.
Um.
Can we comment on the two issues I discussed with you this morning?
Uh, yep, uh, well, I got, I got item number seven, but we got the treatment plant project to talk about. Dylan's been very patient, if we could get to that first, I will cover that under.
Is it?
Okay.
Okay, alright, so done with the paving projects.
If you don't have any other questions?
No, we're at the beginning of the paving projects. Hello, Dylan.
I, I really don't have any data for you, unfortunately. Mid-June is what we're still anticipating by the.
End of next week.
Yeah, for.
That will be a budgetary cost estimate.
So that's the, that's the num, those are the numbers that we're looking for.
That we desperately need, yes.
Right, and then formalize the fact that we cannot afford this thing.
So we can start screaming for help with some evidence.
Alright, so they are on track for getting us.
Yes.
Something there.
The only other thing I'd add to that is they did give us a report. I haven't had it, I really haven't had time yet to digest what's in it. Uh, regarding ventilation in our current facility, so I.
HVAC.
Yeah, I don't have much to tell you about it other than it basically outlines that we don't have any.
Awesome.
So.
You needed a report to tell you this.
No, no, it was a more detailed report than that. And so what, what it is, is it's in draft form right now.
Yes.
Dylan will comment on it.
Okay.
We'll get a revised copy of that and then provide you. It's going to be part of their cost estimate for maintenance of the current plant.
So that's one a- aspect of it.
So.
They.
Sorry, go ahead, Mark.
Did they do any boring tests up at the top?
They're done.
You know, up at the mountain where they were.
Haven't done that yet. They, they're looking at midsummer, so they have to line up a contractor to do that still.
Okay, so you said when, midsummer?
That's what they're hoping.
They are, they already went up and looked, the engineers went up and looked at it, but they do not have a contractor.
And we do have the.
Actually do the work.
Previous work, they have that in their possession.
They do have the previous work, okay, yeah. Yeah.
The only comment I make about that study was when the facility was built, it did, it did have ventilation for, you know, for its era. Right?
Right.
So, I, I mean, design has changed so much, so you gotta keep in mind that not, it's not like it's so egregious by. So egregious by nineteen seventy-four standards, so let's keep that in mind that you gotta kind of think back to how engineering.
Sure, sure.
And then then digest it, and so. But other than that, yeah, everything's still on track out here, it hasn't been uh any favorite since the last meeting Mark updated you guys on um. August. Okay, August for the basis of the design report to be.
Yep.
Alright.
Will we have those by the next meeting, do you think?
The what?
The numbers.
Well, yeah.
I mean, we may have to have a special.
You're gonna have a special.
Special meeting to discuss it, I think.
And and it probably is gonna be a meeting with council, so it won't even be a meeting. It will just be a discussion.
Discussions, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Anything else, Dylan? Alright, thank you. Let's move on to town manager update.
So you have. You know, just whatever you need to do. Um, legislation, current legislation, I sent out the reminder, uh, the notice. Uh, that we received yesterday on the zoning uh legislation. Um, so that, you know, they are closing in tomorrow is. The last day of voting on the session. Um, they've been going back and forth between the House and the Senate. Um, we're losing most of our issues.
As expected.
From NHMA as expected. The good news is two ninety-seven gets a vote tomorrow. And it looks like the amendments that NHMA and the Health Trust have been asking for. Are gonna be carried through, um, so that is a, that is a good thing. Um, and, you know, we ended up. Winning, nothing got amended to the state budget as far as donor community, so we won that. Um, it's just in the zoning and land use that we're, we're losing the biggest pieces. Uh, the uh retirement for group one. Or two.
Firefighters and police.
Firefighters and police.
First responder.
That, that has died, right? Or is it still good?
No, there's been another amendment.
Another amendment?
To restore them in a tiered format.
Okay.
Basically, based on the time of service or date of hire, really. What they're doing is basically just paving those, those that were affected by the middle.
Yep.
Uh, that middle group, um, phasing each, uh, each one by year is going to be added to that. Um, is gonna basically get restored benefits, um, but they're not doing everybody at the same time.
And we'll see what the.
Yeah, no, it sounds like what the feds did when they. Phasing.
Yep.
Different hiring.
So all of this is gonna be a net negative for the town though, right?
Um, we lost some, we lost some uh monies uh through revenue sharing. We're getting a smaller piece of meals and rooms, that was in the budget.
Yeah.
Um.
That wasn't money.
It wasn't, it wasn't a lot, but it's the percentage, you know, we're losing percentages, so. Um, and then the the land use stuff is our.
It's all just the zoning stuff, right?
The zoning stuff, uh, is gonna just take the planning board time to go through.
Well, that could potentially really change the character of the town, I mean.
Well, actually, we're looking at, some of the bills have been amended, so like the ADU.
Yeah.
Uh, question, the detached ADU, they changed to detached or. Attached, so we already have attached in.
Which is the previous law, right?
So we may not have to make any changes.
Okay.
So, you know, just making those little amendments and tweaks to the legislation. You know, you gotta see what it is actually at the end of tomorrow.
Okay.
Before we can really assess what we're gonna need to change in our ordinance.
Okay.
So when this gets all wrapped up.
So.
I would like an assessment from you on the impacts of the. Um, like less money we'll get and so forth.
We will.
Cause it, you know, if it's twenty thousand dollars, we could probably swallow that, if it's. Two hundred thousand dollars, that's gonna be a harder pill to swallow it.
Well, we're still gonna have to swallow it, it's gonna be harder to do.
Right.
Yeah.
So I mean, I guess they'll have any differences they have to go to the conference committee, then it's gonna get to the governor by the middle of the month.
Right.
Right, for her action, and so by the end of the month.
Everything's gotta be signed.
Everything's gotta be signed, so probably something we'll look at at a July meeting.
Yeah, probably the second July.
Second where everything, where everything finally landed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As well as the planning board, I think.
I would just like to know whether we have to modify. If you will, our path forward in any way because of these changes.
Sure.
I think that's important.
Yeah, well, and we're still waiting for the decision from the New Hampshire Supreme Court, which is gonna have, could have a tremendous impact. So that's still hanging over us as well.
That's been paying in a long time.
Yeah, no, since last fall, I guess they took it. I think it was last fall, so.
Like it's been hanging for decades.
Yeah, well, it has in a larger sense, yeah. Alright, if there's nothing on current, yep, moving on to department operations review.
Um, the items uh that uh Dan referred to uh specifically were street signs. Uh, street signs, did you get a response to that? So we, we have street signs on order.
You mean the, the names of streets? Okay, right.
Um, our plan is still, if they can deliver them, uh, that we can get them up along Valley Road. The ones on Valley Road.
Right, that was the plan, right, to the, the major.
By July.
Mm-hmm.
That is still our plan, if they can deliver.
Okay.
The remainder of the signs that we had on our list. Uh, which are most of the rest of the signs in town, uh, would would be done before winter. Um, as Megan can get to them.
Fine.
Okay.
They have to send you the right signs to get it. You know, the first set done.
The what?
The first set that you're trying to get done by July fourth, they have to send you the correct signs.
Well, so I said.
Can't just be any sign.
No, they're not right, right, yeah, for those intersections.
You sent them a prioritized list or?
I did.
We did.
Okay.
And just on the uh, just on the signs and uh road markers, uh, now the weather's better and now that. My knee sort of functions, I've been doing my usual walkabouts and. Yeah, I think some of the signs, I just put it on your worklist, I know you guys already have a ton of stuff, but there are a number of signs and. Reflexers that are down, a lot of the signs seem kind of. Posts seem kind of wobbly too, so. It's one, it's one of those things you put on a to-do list that you get to when you get to.
Right.
I understand that.
The U. Posts, the style, we're moving to the square posts, so any of those that are. Wobbly or falling will get new ones, um, any of the trail signs, we're taking um. Stakes into the ground trying to prop it back up.
Right. Good, yeah, they always get beat up over, over the wind, that's, that's fine. I, since was talking about uh road signs and so forth, um. Is there a reason why we decided not to put up a delineator across from the golf club? Clubhouse, there's a long stretch between Valley Road and.
So there were two.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Out, somebody hit them, so they were picked up, but it it had rained, so we hadn't put them back.
Yeah, and put them, okay, it just been a bit, so I I assumed, I thought someone might have taken them or something. And I thought it were two, but I couldn't tell for sure, cause there's one area people are gonna.
Yeah, yeah.
Try to park, we don't know, so, alright, so.
Yeah, I saw another one down somewhere.
Yeah, they're vent, they're, they, yeah, they go down every so often, someone hits them, they gotta be picked up. No, no big deal. Do we have extras or do we just, okay, so just a matter of getting to it. Okay, that's fine. I'm good. There was another issue you guys talked about?
Yeah, just minor.
Nick, go ahead. Um, the other question I had that Mark and I discussed were the tags for the um. What do you call it, transfer station tags? I know that we had discussed that a long time ago when we were trying to get out new tags for everybody.
Yeah, I think we supposed to do it this summer, right?
And I was just wondering what the status of that was.
Yeah, we're still working on that. Looking at probably setting out maybe the third or fourth quarter, um, they'll be labeled for twenty-six and twenty-seven. Uh, so it'll be good for an actual two-year.
Third and fourth quarters, that's quite a ways out.
Okay.
I don't think there's a problem with the current stickers, it's just that.
No, I'm just trying to keep track of things, I wanna make sure we're keeping the public informed to what we're doing. Cause it kind of slipped off my radar and then it just dawned on me, it's like, oh yeah, that was the topic. Okay, okay, thanks.
Other department operation, DPW.
Received, you re, saved your DPW and DPS.
Yeah.
Updates. Uh wastewater treatment, pretty standard operations for right now.
Getting ready for break point season.
Oh boy.
Getting ready for what?
Type of treatment that we do for water removal in the summer months.
Oh, okay.
That we're gonna have to do more of.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, so. Uh, and everything's good there with?
Admin, pretty, pretty.
Definitely, I think for the first time since I've been here going on four years. Uh, really felt this, a shoulder season this year in April and May in Town Hall, traffic down considerably, phone calls down quite a bit. Um, hasn't really impacted our revenue lines that much, it's just, you know, the the volume. I I just really felt a considerable decrease this year than any other year. Outside of that, I, as you know, the finance office has been preparing documentation um for the bond sale, which went very well. Um, we're also, Mark has tasked us with kind of doing a um, uh forecast of our debt service schedule. Um, incorporating some of the uh assumptions that we have with the wastewater treatment plan project, as well as our capital improvement plan. And as a, I have planned out a trajectory of what your act is gonna be over the next thirty years. So we'll start working on that. Good news from the post office, Fred, we're um near to date in uh revenue. For the CPU sixty-seven hundred dollars ahead of schedule from where we were last year, which will bode nicely for us come twenty-six. Cause that's when we'll be next eligible to submit to the USPS a rate increase application for the revenue that the US government gives us. To operate that CPU, so they wanna see our volumes increasing and uh that's exactly what we're doing. I think the addition of the posted leader to the CPU was a big win for us. So, we have to report that. Other than that, I think from an expense and revenue standpoint, uh, our, our tax revenue is starting to come in. Um, in drips and grabs, I'm hoping um. No later in the middle of July to pay off that one hundred and fifty thousand borrow on that, that tax anticipation note that we took out. So, um, it's looking good, but our bond payment is also due in mid-July too, so I just wanna keep a close eye on that. Until we um, until we repay that part. Other than that, there's any questions?
Chief, I saw Amanda at the casting for Kirby, she looked like she's raring to go, unless she's going off to training, right?
Yep, she's been a couple of weeks left.
Of the fire academy, but then she's. Off another training?
Uh, no.
No, oh, okay.
No, that is it.
Yeah, sure you guys are happy.
Complete the trifecta, so.
Great.
Should be officially a fire paid, so.
Great. Excellent.
Uh, yeah, just getting ready to shift gears for for summertime. Um, just waiting on, we're still waiting on parts and pieces, Taser keeps sending us bits and pieces of. Body cans and tasers, so we don't have everything, so we can actually get trained and implemented. Uh, out, uh, we're gonna hopefully get that straightened out within the next few weeks, but. Other than that, any questions on my report? Really good derby. Uh, you know, despite the cold weather.
How does a four-year-old rein, reel in, twelve and a half? I wonder how that happens.
We have four-year-olds in that, with some help, I'm sure.
Uh, good for him or them, or whatever the case. Maybe, and I see you're uh, you're looking good on this uh part-time hire, um.
Uh, yeah, we have a, uh, an appointment to sit down, um, bring her in, and down with Mark and then. Uh, get a final offer going for part-time, uh, she's interested in part-time public safety. Uh, we also have a, a talent person that's also interested in just call EMS um and independent. For background also and looking at, um, I gotta, I gotta look at what I've got for training monies. Typically, we will pay for their training, but we don't pay for them to be there. Um, so I just, with one already in training. I, we usually don't count on multiples going during the year, but I might be able to make it work.
Okay.
Um, we don't have an opportunity to get somebody from town that often, so it's nice.
Absolutely.
To do that.
Yeah. Speaking of new hires, you got, you got Wade. Dylan, you got uh just a large pile of applique, job app, you know, response to job application for wastewater. Okay.
We uh haven't had, haven't had any luck.
Yeah, it's not unexpected.
Yeah, it's uh, it's going to be an item of discussion, I, I spoke to someone from the state. Um, on Monday, they, they have been playing phone tag on something uh unrelated to this, but. Had a conversation about a lot of different uh avenues to publicize. Municipalities in general, about their job postings, and I think one of them, what I suggested, and we're gonna discuss it at the next board meeting, as I mentioned. Is um advertising them at every board meeting that we have on certification committee and sending them out to all new people that are applying to licensing.
Yeah.
Um, as a cost effective.
Right.
No, no cost to the municipalities, it's a service that's benefiting the state. We don't have any operators in the state, the state suffers, municipalities suffer, but the state suffers more. Cause they're gonna be the ones that have to answer to how this crisis happened. Uh, so try to come up with any pragmatic approach to it that we can, um. I had a lot of questions and they didn't have a whole lot of answers.
Yeah, alright, well, thanks.
Yeah.
Anything on rec, Mark, anything else?
She's just getting ready to start her uh training.
That's right, converting over, yeah, summer camps.
Getting summer camps.
Hard to believe, it's already, although these two days, I think it feels like summer camp.
Yeah, yeah.
Days, right?
We could string three of them together, that would be good.
Uh, easy now.
Yeah, I know, I know, don't go over.
But speaking about rec, just I'd noticed on the revenues, that after-school program is not getting out of the park.
So she's, she's finishing the after-school program Friday this week. But they did a great job.
Their revenue, I mean, projected, they only have eight percent left and that's not even counting the fall.
Not counting the fall.
So.
Right, good, well, right, so school's out, what, the thirteenth?
Yes.
I saw, speaking of finance, if we have no further questions.
Uh, expenditure report and revenue reporter in here for you. You have any questions?
What was the miscellaneous revenue of the ninety-two thousand? Is it just little? Things here and there?
Where do you see that?
What line number is it?
Three five oh nine dash.
Is the, is what they just voted on, some of it in there.
Some of it, I still.
Yeah, so the FEMA reimbursement monies, we, we gotta check that line, cause there may be some of.
I was thinking that, but that was ninety-nine.
We've been getting their uh payments in tranches, so it doesn't lump sum.
Oh, I see.
And we were, we were just notified today that the, another piece of repair work. That we did in twenty twenty-four was just approved by FEMA and the state for reimbursement.
Oh, good.
So I didn't, I didn't see an amount associated, they just put the project number there, so I'd have to check which one it was.
Six and eight.
Six and eight thousand, yeah, it wasn't a big one, but again, we're getting, we're getting approved as we go on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll just do the same thing with those.
And we'll uh we'll we'll clean up that number prior to the next meeting, so that.
Okay.
We get a real number for the miscellaneous.
Right, and pick up what we just voted.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else on financial review?
From a formatting standpoint, like expense.
I think it looks great.
Yeah, I was fine with it, yeah, I was able to quickly understand and assimilate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have one question, and I might actually ask this to Mark in private, but. What is forty-three-twelve where it says highways?
Is it expenses or revenues?
Send her expenses, line number.
Forty-three-twelve highways, that's the highway department. It's like six hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, that's the, that's the approved annual budget for highways, for roads, road maintenance. For road. The highways, the highway crew. Okay.
So plowing and.
Plowing and all. Yeah, I I don't consider them highways really. Well, that's the title that's in the state chart of accounts, so that's what we.
Titles go with these names.
Yeah. So this is our road maintenance. Yep. Okay.
Right, anything else on finance from anybody? Be good?
Yep.
All right.
So we have. Okay.
Yep. Good, okay.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Move on to calendar review, as previously mentioned, our next select board meeting, regular select board meetings on the eighteenth of June here, three P M. Planning board meeting on twelve June at three P M, and that will be a very interesting meeting cuz that's when Tyrell's gonna.
Three P M or is it?
No, it said.
Eight A M, sorry, it says three P M, I just read it without even thinking.
Do that again.
Yep, you did it again.
It is on the site, right?
It is correct on the site as eight A M.
Yeah. I imagine we'll be meeting later in the day in a public hearing sometime downstream, but.
It might feel like it goes until three.
It may.
It may go to three.
And that is uh in our packet, that was just the information, I saw all the uh. I saw your response basically about the the staff response to the adventure center, a bunch of questions, yeah. That's all moving along in terms of.
Yeah, there's.
Talking to a planner and.
It's all, all of those comments have been um submitted to the applicant. Um so that they can answer as many of those. As possible.
Right. Okey-dokey. Anything else on calendar review for anybody?
Well, I would, I would like to find out what your calendars are, we need to have. Um a couple of. Uh special meetings, the first one would be the non-meeting with council as soon as we get the numbers, so. Availability the week of June. Uh the weekend or the week of June sixteenth.
Okay.
And the week of the twenty-third.
It's too big, so the first one is for. Meeting with town council?
Well, it it doesn't matter, I just need to know if there are dates in those two weeks that you are not available.
Okay.
So that when I'm arranging. And I know that, you know, or times, like if we need to do later meetings because.
All right.
You're in your summer or earlier, whatever it is.
About it.
I have a dentist appointment on the sixteenth. That's the kind of thing I need. No, it's in board. At one. So six sixteen. At one.
I have no, I'm free anytime on the sixteenth.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with the seventeenth, I'm just looking.
And then I think my wife gets back from Europe on the twenty-sixth. Okay, that's the following week. Yeah, so six twenty-six and twenty-seven, I'll just block those. All right. I don't know what time she's getting back. Yeah, but I I just will block those days and we'll try to set it up for another date. Yeah. Wendy, what's yours?
I definitely can can meet before ten o'clock on Mondays. Thursdays and Fridays. After next week, I should be flexible on all day Wednesday. And. Tuesdays after three, I should be available.
Okay.
If need, if needed, I might be able to get some other flexibility there.
All day on Wednesdays after next or next week.
Yeah, not good.
Yeah, okay.
Uh I'm pretty free both those, both those weeks, I've got uh with the exception of Wednesday, the eighteenth. Um beside the select board meeting, prior to that, I have a P T, so maybe the afternoon of the eighteenth would be not be good anyway. Cuz we're meeting. Well, if we can squeeze it in ahead of time, I might be able to.
Okay.
Uh it'd be tough for me to get back.
Yeah, I'll I'll exclude that as a special meeting date cuz we already have the regular meeting.
And uh and nothing on the week of the twenty-third on my calendar, so we were tentatively scheduled to meet. With uh James, that monthly meeting we established on.
Yes.
That's on, that was scheduled for the twenty-sixth at two o'clock.
Yeah.
So that's all I have in those two weeks, so we find a. You should say we need two sep- two separate meetings or one?
Yeah.
Two?
Two.
Okay.
One is gonna be treatment plant and the other is gonna be the pond.
Okay. Very good. Anything else in the calendar from anybody?
No, I'm gone tomorrow at the. Yeah, you're at.
Oh, yeah, you have to go to school.
There you go. Yeah, Jaffrey, is that where you did it?
No, I was down in them.
They were in concrete. Yeah, I have to drive. To get there. Yeah. Yeah, there was, there was one that was located away. Yeah, you better leave early. There's a, there ain't no good way to get there from. Right, that's the problem. Yeah, you got a balloon, you can go straight across the state.
Now, don't discourage them.
It will be, it will be good.
It'll be pretty dry.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to board, board, board concerns and directive.
I have one quick thing, I'm hanging on here.
Yeah.
Village Trail, don't know where we're at, but we have the two lights. One that's completely missing its shade, which I think we've been discussing for a while, and then there's another one that. We're all, I believe, presuming got beaten by a baseball bat or something, it's it's crunched in all around on all sides.
Nice.
Um the um the conference center green, you know, wayfinding sign has been nipped off. I'm assuming it got struck by by the groomer. And then there's still that that perpetual puddle in that. Um.
Yeah.
Under road path. The the culvert, the the walking culvert, I don't know what that, is that called something different when it's a pedestrian-sized culvert?
No.
It's still called the culvert, okay.
You mean the one under Snow's Brook?
Yeah.
It has the pedestrian path.
Well, it's been worse the past year and a half since the.
As you don't go through.
It got washed out.
And you know, the culvert, the culvert on your valley road is also in the same, now in the same category, it's wet all the time. We're gonna need to look at those.
Look at those, yeah.
The valley road one hopefully will be fixed when we fix the drainage.
Yeah, but I think it drains into that, I mean, you see the.
Right now.
So it's always wet, right?
Yeah, but the um but the one for Village Trail had been pretty dry for the most part, um it just was one of those. Big storms in whichever December of twenty-three or twenty-four that really, and the resort had helped kind of fill in. In the moment, but. It wasn't a lot, it was just to get through snow season, I think. So if those are on your list, I think that would be.
And since we're talking about minor things for DPW, I have a few, just put them on the list, I, as I said earlier. I know you guys are hard pressed, but it should be on a list somewhere to get to at some point. Uh is there any possibility of policing around the transfer station, like in the back, before we put the gate up, a lot of trash? Blew over into that stand of trees.
Yes.
And it looks pretty bad. You did a great job, by the way, it was really nice by that bear or whatever that thing is. You that you fixed that up really nice, you know what I'm talking about, right along the fence line, that parallels the road.
We're changing the uh screening to the outer part of the fence instead to help wind, so it doesn't blow off.
Right.
Um while we're back there, we plan to pick up all of.
Yeah, just stuff looked like it had been blown before we got the fence in. Again, uh very minor thing, you know, you put the rocks down on Snow's Mountain Road at the lower reaches of the road on either side. The plowing has pushed some of the rocks up out of the where they should be. Take a guy, person with a metal rake, few minutes to. These are easy things, I think, just noticeable. Uh we talked about that, we talked about that. There's a broken board in that fence we have on Packard Road.
Yes, we, that's on our worklist today, yeah.
There's a, there's a um. Wood pile still in Snow's Mountain Road in the. In the town right away, took out, the owner took out a couple, but it looks like he piled it into one big one, but it's right in, it's perpendicular. So it may. The debris washing down may form a little dam there and then spill out in the road, I don't know, just stuff I noticed. Couple, couple of the very quick things aren't so much DP uh W, but DPS. What's the status of um the speed board that we had talked about? You know, putting one in.
I know, we had talked about it, I think we were getting a price.
Yeah.
Um yeah. And I, as of that point, I'm not sure.
Okay. I just have it on my tickler.
I can get back to you on that.
Yeah. By Golden Heights Road.
By what, which room?
Golden Heights.
Golden Heights.
Where the villas are, you know, the new construction area.
Okay.
We had talked about it, and I think the board approved putting one in there.
Yeah.
And um so you know, now we have this new and improved RV and trailer. Zoning ordinance uh. There's an RV and trailer that's always been there, you know, in this, in the. Golden Eagle parking lot right alongside the road, right along Packard.
Well, that's a pickup truck, right?
Pickup truck, it's registered as a pickup truck. It's not being lived in.
It's it's registered as a.
It's registered as a pickup truck.
Okay.
I I unless it has, unless it can't be changed, it's a, it is a pickup truck, it gets registered as a.
A pickup and not as an RV.
Not as an RV.
Yeah, I think that was the full purpose of getting that.
Exactly.
Right, yeah.
So it was a little easier.
Right. But if that doesn't.
We can talk at them, so it's not a.
I don't know what is. Is that a class C RV?
No.
It's not.
Well, there's a trailer there now too, uh.
There's an RV trailer?
No, no, there's a trailer next to it.
Okay.
I mean, I, my reason for bringing it up, if we're gonna enforce this on other people, we better be. We better be consistent across, across the town.
I I believe in there is. Some gray area that allows connected to a business that is a resident who owns a business.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, if that's the case, then that's, as long as we have a. Yeah, as long as we have a reason, so.
I have it.
Right.
I haven't touched it, I know it's there.
Okay.
But um there's that. Little section of the, of the ordinance that allows it if it's a cat to.
Right.
To business.
Right. Um okay, fine, I just wanna make sure we're consistent.
Question is, is it doesn't, the statute doesn't specify what is the business because it's, this is his residence, but he operates. Out of his business, but it's in a hotel. Uh it doesn't specify.
Right.
You know, it just. Uh it, I think it was more written for one and two families, single-family home.
Yeah, yeah.
Um because the person lives there, I'm applying that same. Uh but if you feel differently, I can.
No, I think uh I'm I'm, I'm fine with your discretion, chief, I just wanna be able to stand up and say when asked. Well, you're not letting, you know, I have to do, but you know what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I I checked in, you know, this was when the bulk trailers show up and that sort of thing. Uh I stopped in yesterday or uh earlier in the week, uh one showed up at the uh Black Bear. Um and they gave permission to us till Friday for it being there, so it meets the definition, it's.
Yeah, it was a seven days or something like that, yeah. That's, that's funny.
Yep, so we are. We are keeping an eye on that, on that stuff, but certainly, we might not see everything. I kinda, you know, the seven days, I'll drive around on a Monday, and if the next week it's still there.
You got your seven days.
That's what, yeah, that's what I'll start, start asking.
Ask some questions, fair enough.
Yeah.
In similar vein, the um and Mark and I have talked about this, the. Um by the tennis courts, they've put clay and stuff in the right away, along with some more materials yesterday. Because they were paving other little sidewalks there. Um so that, I think you called Rainy.
The property manager, um it's aware it should be picking that up.
Yeah, the, the only point I'll make for this is that. They did the same thing last year, and last year it sat for, I don't know, a month and a half, two months, so. Um and it's now been a month. So this is the, it's a habit, if you will, so I think they should find a better place to store their. Their clay off their tennis courts, if you will.
Yeah, you talked to the property manager on it.
Yeah.
And the property.
Rainy.
Oh, yeah.
And we will get it removed, like I told then, we'll get it removed in the next two weeks.
Okay.
Moved before the Fourth of July.
Very good.
And it will not stay there two months this year, we'll make sure of that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um. Chief, is there anything we can do with that intersection of Golden Heights and uh and Valley? I mean, they they police, they picked it up nicely, I think, I think uh we had talked about it and and you took care of that. But it still looks cruddy, I don't know what it is. I mean, there's a traffic.
It's a violation, what is?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, yeah, I know it's not good enough to look bad, but it's a, it's dead patch. Uh a pile of rock, a pile of dirt, a sign, I don't know who belongs to, with a red placard on it, that's tilting this way. I mean, it's just right on the main road, and there's a cone, a traffic cone. I don't think it's ours, I think maybe property owner put it out, it it just looks bad, I'm looking for a way to. Anything we can do, unfortunately, if there isn't, there isn't, I mean, it's.
Well, they, they met all our requests to, you know, well, to a certain point.
They cleaned up.
They, they did move the dumpster, they did move the porta potty, the lift is in the back, you still have the storage container. Which they don't have space for.
Yeah, that's in the back.
Uh elsewhere, uh but. Um. That is their little piece of property, you know, uh I think they're waiting for their landscapers, I talked to them yesterday. When we were over there doing the final, they still have some uh pretty extensive plantings and that sort of thing that's gonna happen.
No, that's what I wanted to know.
Problem has been the weather.
Okay.
So um I think once, once their landscaping crews get up here, I think you'll probably see a lot of that stuff get moved around.
Good.
So.
Right, thank you for the update.
Sure.
And um. Ice arena, I guess we're gonna talk about it at our next meeting, is that still the plan, we're still good with that?
Mm-hmm, yep.
I don't know how much stuff we're putting on our next meeting, I think we're. Okay, cuz I had somebody ask about what's going on with the ice arena. I told them we're gonna discuss it further. That's probably enough. Whiskey barrels, are we good with the whiskey barrels, I see some.
They're being done, Lee is working on them.
Satisfied with?
So far, so good.
These are just things I had in my tickle.
So we're, we're planning those or?
No, no, people.
Somebody else, the race center.
Is in charge of.
Yeah.
Donating them, see if people will take them over and.
Yeah. I've seen them start popping up with flowers.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we want, that's exactly what we want.
Clearly, it didn't grow that fast, but.
Okay. That's all I had, plenty. Anything else from anybody? Those songs and directives? I think I see.
We have something correspondence.
I believe we have one, maybe.
There was. Um yeah, letter or email from Stan Picos.
Right. So he asked that to be um, it's a letter he sent to Mark and to maybe another C seed. Uh be shown to the board, so here it is, everybody. Share it with you. I'm not sure I have any other comment on the matter.
No, we took care of it during the public hearing.
Right.
Covered.
That part of it, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Okay, any other correspondence?
Uh yep, we have a uh note that we were given end of the day yesterday from Gene Mullin. Just notifying us um that Paul Solnier has resigned as a member of it is Z B A. Um Gene is asking that Cindy Picos be elevated from uh alternate to. Uh full member of the board. Um you can do that for the simple, it is the selectman's uh purview.
Is only Cindy's okay with it?
Cindy is okay with it, from what Gene said, and that's gonna leave us with two. Uh alternates vacant on the Z B A. So they already have one alternate that was vacant. Physician.
So I'll make a motion to uh elevate Cindy Picos from alternate to full member of the Z B A. To complete the term of Paul Solnier, who has resigned.
I'll second that.
Correspondence?
That's it for correspondence right now.
Non-public?
Yeah, I got a couple of things on.
We shouldn't go any non-public?
A legal matter.
Legal matters and the personal. Just let us not face it anymore. No longer broadcasting.
Sorry, Dan, I couldn't figure a way to do it during the meeting, but you might wanna watch your papers from covering the microphone. I don't think you're moving it a lot, but that noise could be.
Carries through the microphone. Oh, to the.
Yeah.
Video.
Yep, yeah, never even thought of it, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, couldn't figure a way to mime it earlier.